Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. The Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, February the 7th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Leyland?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Belka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Little?
Here. Would you please join us in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hit the light on the flag.
Okay, moving on to Item 1, Agenda Received or Proposed or Amended.
So moved.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 2 is our budget work session. This is consideration of all aspects of the FY '20 Blackhawk County Budget. Susan?
Okay. We were gonna have Bob Lincoln today with County Social Services, but I'm not sure if he is unable to make it because of the weather, if he's on his way or not. So up on the screen, I sent this to you yesterday. After the meeting on Tuesday, we had talked about a variety of changes and additions that we were going to make to the budget. There's, under the bullet points below, we added a detention officer in the sheriff's office, changed some pay steps in county attorney for one position, equity adjustments, merit increases for non-bargaining. I did increase, because I had originally had in department heads at 3%, I did increase that to 4% since that's what we did for elected officials and that's part of what we're doing for non-bargaining. I adjusted the deputy sergeant's pay scale per Debbie's proposal that she had discussed with the sheriff. I did increase courthouse security a little bit because it was in there at a flat amount and we talked about that, and put in the additional $4,000 for libraries. With those changes up above, the green box is where we were on Tuesday and the purple box is with the changes. So it increased it a couple cents on the urban. It's basically the same there on the rural. And I know there were some concerns or questions, so I kinda just wanted to talk a little bit again about the tax rates, how we compare to other counties, before we get into a discussion on where we want to be. Let me start with our taxable valuation. This is our valuation growth, FY '11 to FY '20. We're in, we're the blue. And then the red is benchmark counties and I took the top 10 except for Polk and Lynn, which are, you know, really kind of much larger than we are. And so these are the counties that I'm using. But as you can see, you know, in most of the years, we are, we are lower than the other, the average for the other counties. And the five-year percent growth for us, and we did have a growth in FY, for FY '20, was 14.41%. For the benchmark counties, for that same five-year period, it was 24%. So that's one thing that impacts our taxes. And then I had sent you, and we had county social services due to come today, but I had sent you some comparisons on our mental health levy rates. But Blackhawk, in the county social services region, our rate is much higher, significantly higher than, than, and I'm comparing it here again to, I think, one, two, three, six other counties, or sort of the top seven, I think, or, there's a couple that were some oddities I pulled out, or this was just the information I happened to have. But we go now here to our levy rate. So the levy per capita that Blackhawk levied for FY '19 was 3518. The second highest was Johnson County. And some of the counties in their region, they don't all equally levy the same amount, but, but then it goes down from there. And if you look at our FY '19 tax rate for mental health, you can see it's significantly higher. We were at 86 cents per thousand, all the way down to Dubuque at 24 cents. And there's several of these counties are in, combined in the same mental health regions. But overall, and I think I sent you that in the email, and I unfortunately didn't put it on the chart, but the statewide average, you know, is somewhere in between where, where you see it here with the, these other counties. I think we are up in, out of the 99 counties, maybe 92nd or something like that, fairly high. So that impacts our urban tax rate when we're looking at the $6 and something. You know, if we were able to, you know, if we had a lower mental health rate, that would, that would impact that. So let me pull up that comparison.
And is that something, Susan, that, like, say Bob's planning to address for us that would clarify?
Yes, and I had sent him that and asked him to speak to you about that.
Okay, thank you.
He's on his way, so. So we'll take a look here. This is the comparison of urban and rural rates between the top eight counties in FY ' '19. And you can see, Blackhawk, we're the third from the top, the $6.69. This is the year we had to include Country View. Of course, we have our radio bond. And I realize there are differences among all the counties and what they have in their budget, you know. For example, Johnson County, I know, has, incorporates all of the dispatch center in the county's budget, you know. There are items like that that impact that. But the statewide average is $6.30 per thousand. And, you know, I guess maybe the one point, without the radio bond, without Country View, we were looking at being $6.17, which would put us down here right in the middle. And if we didn't have such a high mental health tax levy rate, we would be down here $5.80, you know. So the rural, and our rate has gone up over the past several years, so we're kind of right here in the middle. We were at $3.50 last year. And the statewide average there is $3.33. And that's why we are looking at making some changes this year to not have that rural rate go up so drastically.
So is there a trend with other counties as well? They've all gone up, like we said?
I don't have that information.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I do have, and I could pull it up, I kinda took a look at what other counties, and, but that might take some further investigation. What other counties include in their rural, and it kind of varies.
Okay, no, thank you.
To clarify that, with the 3518, the other 21 counties all pay that are in our region all pay the same.
Yes, yes, all the counties in our region all pay 3518 per capita, yes, that's true. So I don't know if we want to move on, I don't know if we want to have a discussion. Let me come back here to where we are before Bob gets here, if we want to move on to capital, or, you know, I know Tom sent an email and his concern was that he feels that the rate that we're looking at is too high. I think if we come down here, whoops. Okay. So what I brought up the other day, and let me pull that up. So this has been our, our trend for the tax levy without the radio debt. You know, we saw an increase, it looks from FY '14 to '16, and then we kind of leveled off there. Last year, we went up due to Country View, but what we're looking at, I have 617 here, and if we remove the radio debt from our new calculation, it'll be $6.19. But it is back to the same level we were at in the previous three fiscal years.
Is that the number you don't like?
Well, not necessarily I don't like. I mean, it's, I think it's something, if you go back farther than the last four years, it's something certainly higher than what it used to be. Last year, if you're down to about where you were last year, you also had quite a bit of money that was going into Country View that doesn't exist this year. And then the rollback obviously makes a difference, so it's just something I questioned yesterday.
So. That's what I thought. It looks, as far as, pretty consistent, except for last year's Country View, which is, I think, a pretty good position to be in, but.
And, you know, considering that we've had slower growth, I think, than some of the other counties, you know, it really is a discussion, I think, that the board can have about what, you know, what they think the appropriate level should be and. So the taxes on a $100,000 assessed value residential, we had estimated, I had estimated $362.84, that was our original estimate, we talked about on Tuesday, down from last year because of Country View, 372.27. In FY '18, it was 365.27. So the new estimate is 364.46. A couple, a little bit higher, less than the previous two years. Of course, less than FY '16 is when we had our first payment on the radio bonds and we had a big jump up that year, so.
Does that figure cover potential payment to bonds if we borrow?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
If we're going to bond this year, which we haven't had that discussion yet for the bridge or whatever, is that figured into this?
It, no, it isn't figured into this. The last, we talked about that, there seemed to be an interest in not bonding for that bridge and looking at other options. What I had in the budget, and we can, when we look at the debt service expenditures, when I first proposed bonding for the bridge, my plan was to use reserves, our road and bridge debt service fund reserves for this first year. We actually, we have to do that if we, if we bond for it because we would have had to have a pre-levy resolution thing in order to levy for that first year. So it wouldn't impact the taxes, we can still bond for that bridge and use reserves. What I had estimated over an eight-year for $2 million was like $375,000 in principal and interest. And when we get to the debt service discussion, you'll see that we have enough in the fund balance in roads and bridges debt service to cover that and actually to, to use some fund balance in, in future years, too.
I'd prefer that.
If we can, I'll wait for the discussion, but yeah, it sounds good, yeah.
So that is one of the decisions we'll need to make, whether we want to bond for the Cedar Wopsy Bridge or not. And then rural, you know, it has gone up, but in FY '19 then, you know, I'm attempting here to, to level that off, which is why we made those adjustments in the rural fund.
I had a couple of people approach me and why is to revisit the format we're looking at for the patrol funding, that maybe a 90-10 split would be more appropriate between how much urban folks would actually potentially utilize those services where they're already paying for police services in Waterloo and Cedar Falls, and that they're really essentially being double taxed again, which is what we were trying to avoid with the moving consolidated communication, but, but that a 90-10 split would be more appropriate.
A, I'm sorry, putting 10% in the rural? I mean, 10% back into the general?
Yeah, 10% in the general.
Okay. Was this, did this come from the sheriff's office?
No, this is coming from constituents.
Oh, okay. You know, that really, in my opinion, is more for the, and I don't think Tony's here today, when I had a discussion with them, him and Mark felt that 20-25%, you know, seemed appropriate, but certainly is.
Maybe we need some type of arguments on that, or, I mean, arguments probably not being the right.
Was there reasoning?
I just thought the reasoning for it either.
Well, the, what people are telling me, they just feel like they're being, that it's, that's really just kind of a shell game, that we're removing consolidated communication into the rural fund so that folks aren't being double taxed in the cities for that, but in exchange, we're just moving the patrol over, and so it's really no net, net difference to those folks.
It isn't, but, you know, when I look at it, it's, I can justify, I can articulate my constituents why I think 25-75 works. I mean, the sheriff's department does provide backup for the cities, not to a great extent, but they are there. Waterloo benefits because we have the facility of the sheriff's department right here in the city, so even as they're coming and going, the presence matters. They do, Cedar Falls tends to rely upon them a lot more than we do. Evansdale relies upon them, Gilbertville, all the other smaller communities. But, and I refer to it as a shell game, too, but at least allocating the money this way, I'm comfortable with it, and I can articulate and justify why I feel that way.
Would it be helpful to hear from Tony again on it, or is?
Yeah, I think if we're going to readjust it, we need to get back in there again to answer some of Chris's concerns, I think we need to have Tony here, so.
Well, I guess we're running out of time. We need to make a decision on what we want to do this year. I mean, we can look at that in the future, but we, we really do need to make a decision so we can.
Can we have him here Tuesday? Or don't you mind doing Budget Tuesday?
I wanted to be done today.
Well, and we can change this yearly if we wanted to, if we didn't like it.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can change it again, too, but I thought if that was, if it's something that we see as really an issue.
Sure.
But for now, you have that built into the 75-25?
I have it 75-25. You know, my first proposal to the sheriff was maybe 20%, and they talked, Captain Herbst said, you know, he felt frankly it was closer to 25% than 20%, so. And that's just, I mean, based on the work that they do with the cities and, you know, some of the other things, but, again, that's, that's not my.
I know. Thank you.
Okay, so, do you want to have more discussion on, I mean, where do you guys want to, do we want to move into capital, or do you want to talk more about where you think the rate should be, or, or what we want to do to, to get us there, or?
I just wanted to back up on one item you talked about earlier on the department heads. I don't think the board made any decision on that.
No, they didn't, no, no. It was just that for my numbers today, I needed to plug something in so that you could take a look.
Over the years, we've aligned the department heads with the non-bargaining. I don't think we ever put them in the same category as elected officials, I could be wrong on that. I think it's with the non-bargaining.
Right, and so I guess my only thing is, we, there was consensus to take a look at doing the equity and merit increases for non-bargaining. So in this FY '20, everyone in non-bargaining will receive at least 4%, because they're, I mean, not 4%, but that's the number I have in there, a 3% across the board, a 1% merit, or a 2% merit, and then the equity adjustments. So, and that's a, so maybe we should start there, because that's a decision that needs to be made. What do you want to do for salaries, so? Maybe that's.
But either way, we want to make sure we get approval from the board on that before we do.
No, that's what I'm saying. Let's, let's talk about that and make that decision, hopefully.
Yeah, let's start there and then go on to capital.
I would like to do that.
Can we start there and go on to capital, then?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, maybe Bob will be here also for CS.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's, it's for you guys.
No, I was gonna say, looking at the changes that you put in there, I was gonna say, too, that one was one that I know, I wasn't sure that we had done the other day, the additional one.
Right, yeah, no, we didn't make a, we didn't vote on it, so we do need to vote on it. So we have the equity adjustments that we discussed, that Debbie proposed, it was, there were six or seven people, I think. We did the plan that she is recommending, anybody below midpoint gets a 2% merit, and then above midpoint, a 1% merit, plus I do have in there the across-the-board of 3%. And then there was some discussion on the non-bargaining deputy sergeants, and Debbie had a plan for some changes there. They're on a, you know, a step plan, and then they get their across-the-board. So I believe the plan that she's proposing, it's about a 5% increase for the deputy sergeants this year, and that's, that's kind of in line with what the, the bargaining and the sheriff and his percentage deputies are getting, so that's what's, I added in there. And then we had.
Elected officials.
And then the department heads, there's five of those, and I had originally had in the 3% across the board, which I had for everybody, so I did up that, put in additional 1% increase to make that more in line with, with the non-bargaining and the elected officials.
The elected officials were what now, the?
We did 5% for the sheriff, 4% for all others, except the supervisors, 2.5%.
And you said the five department heads, who were those, I'm only aware of?
So there are five individuals that are not on the non-bargaining GS scale, they're department heads, that's health department, conservation, VA, IT, and engineer.
Yeah. So you're calling the directors department heads, when their correct title is director, same thing?
It's the same thing, yeah.
Well, I mean, we looked at it different over the years, it's the first time I've heard them called their department heads, so.
That's just the classification that's in.
And again, they were usually aligned with whatever non-bargaining was.
Okay. We can call them whatever you like, but there are five individuals not on the non-bargaining pay scale, I mean, not on the GS scale, and they're not elected officials, and we need to determine what the increase you want to have for them, or?
Well, it's up to the board.
And what's factored into this number is 3% for, for non-bargaining?
No, well, 3% across the board, plus the equity adjustments and the merit increases.
Right, right.
And then, and for, for department heads, or directors, however you want to refer to them, the five individuals I mentioned, a, I had originally put in a 3%, and I upped it for to a 4%.
Well, and we talked about the bargaining units coming in around 2.5.
2.5.
That we expect, that to be about 2.5, and I know there's steps that are included with that.
There's, right, the across-the-board, I think, is around that for most of the units. A couple of them have higher, and then, then there's also the step increases. And, I don't know, Debbie can comment, I can't remember how much the typical step increase is. Do you know, Debbie?
It varies between, I mean, it varies from 4%.
So 2 to 4% on a step increase?
All contracts, or just a few of them?
All of them.
All of them?
I mean, it varies.
So, right. So unless the, they're not topped out, they would be getting a 4 to 5% increase?
So these department heads, directors, what you have built in now, there were some compression issues and other issues that we needed to address, correct?
I don't think with department heads, I think it was more for the non-bargaining.
Gotcha.
On that legend that we always provide, we would kind of show where they were with regard to other, you know, our comparable counties. So the sheriff was below, that was for the comp board. But the others, I think that we were just, Susan just thought about, are we going to treat them more like non-bargaining, or like the elected officials?
And previously, we've done, done bargaining.
It's been done bargaining. It's, like I said, it was confusing to me because it's something different. The two department heads, that I call department heads, they don't receive vacation, or, what is it, Deb, what's the difference between that and the other three that you started?
It comes down to the benefit package, is what, what's the difference. I mean, everybody is heading up a department, but the ones on the GS scale actually have accruals tied to them, so they'll have vacations at casual. The ones that are actually department heads don't have any accruals, they also have long-term disability, so if they want to take vacation, they're basically just.
So that would be Kathy and Kim?
Kathy and Kim, Nafisa, in Kevin's position, and.
Conservation.
Hendricks. They also, none of those guys have accruals.
Oh, they don't get accruals on directors?
Right. So I think the, so, you know, for those guys, because they also don't have a range, but we do have the median and the mean of that, what we give you every year. If, if non-bargaining is gonna, we're gonna use that midpoint as a, as a cutting factor of, you know, where you can get 2% or 1%. For the department heads that don't have that range, you know, you could look at years of service. So if you've been a, a department head for less than five years, maybe you would get a 1%. And if you've been 10 years, you wouldn't get anything, you know.
So putting them all together, we could be fairly consistent.
Right, so that was just something for you to consider, whether you would want to give them, you know, you can't give a merit on the same criteria as you could non-bargaining because they don't really have those salary ranges, but they have years of service, you could use that.
Come close, and performance somewhat, sure. Difference, I think, just really being that we've always lumped them together for the most part before, so this makes it a little bit different.
And the fact you're looking at the supervisors at 2.5%.
Well, we could revisit any of those if, today if we wanted to, if we didn't like the 5, 4, 2.5.
You'd take the three that voted for it to bring it back.
I don't know if it would or not. I was gonna say, we don't have to follow Robert's Rules of Order, that's a guide, we've never adopted that, correct?
And still, you'd have to have one that voted for it to bring it back.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, when you were looking at reducing a number, I guess all things were kind of on the table for what we were gonna look at. We didn't like the 5, 4, 2.5, we didn't have to accept it. Somebody want to propose something, I guess, for moving forward on this one? I guess I was thinking, I, only because I said looking at the non-bargaining.
So I guess just to, we need two resolutions, one for non-bargaining and one for department heads. We already have the ones we did for elected officials, so those are the two that we will need to make a decision on today.
Well, offer a resolution for 3% for the non-bargaining.
I'll second that.
So just 3% and no equity, no?
With equity.
With equity.
With equity adjustments.
With equity and merit, or no merit? I mean, we, we, I mean, more specific.
Now, when you say equity adjustments, I know merit.
The plan that Debbie proposed and sent to you, so it had a 3% across the board, it had the equity adjustments, and then it had the merit increases. Yeah.
The department heads, you identified how many?
Five department heads and two GS scale.
For the equity?
For the equity?
That's, that's a little bit new, right? So what I, yeah, yeah, that, that's kind of a new one that came in after you guys made that other decision. But what my plan initially proposed was just people on the GS scale, so the, the six people that we identified for equity, and then the cutoff being midpoint for the merit, so it would be below, below midpoint, there's a 2% merit, above midpoint was a 1% merit.
So how many people does that involve?
52 people altogether. So.
And that's your recommendation?
In a dollar amount?
Yeah, it was, that was that $63,000 for all of it.
So we have a motion on the table in a second to go with 3% on non-bargaining, is that correct?
And the equity adjustment.
And then the sheriff's.
With the equity adjustment and the, and the merit.
And the merit.
So equity, merit, and 3%?
Yes.
We can do the deputies separately, let's do that.
Please.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Chris.
Roll call, please.
Well, I don't think we have a second, do we?
Yes, I second it.
Even though we didn't quite know how that was playing, details.
Okay.
Clarification's always good.
Okay, you want me to repeat the motion?
No, no, we got it now, no.
Everybody understands, okay.
We're there now.
I, I have a question.
Sorry.
Is this motion consistent with the plan that you presented to the board, Deb? Okay. Excuse me.
No changes? It wasn't that bad.
Leyland?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Belka?
Yes.
White?
No.
Little?
No.
Okay, what else you want to say?
So now we need to treat the non-bargaining deputy sergeants separate because they're, they're a little different. So Debbie had a proposal, and I don't know, Debbie, if you want to tell, talk about it, but it, overall, it ended up being about a 5% increase for the deputy non-bargaining sergeants.
Right, so, you know, when they first came to me and they had wanted me to share that information with you, they were concerned about their salaries, and Sergeant McDonald spoke to you the other day, that initial proposal they brought had a price tag of about $112,000. I met with Tony, we looked over some scenarios, and what we came up with was eliminating the first two steps, we added a 2% at the bottom, one more step, so they have a four step, that's about a $24,000 over the across-the-board. So that, that would cause that, but it does get them out of compression, it has that gap of 10%, it goes from 10, 11, I think the fourth step is 15, 13, and 15. So it keeps them in that range where they're, hopefully, that Tony can support, or, you know, sergeants, deputies will start stepping up to take the sergeant's exams. I think we reduced it quite a bit, but it's still something that everybody is.
So it's a total dollar amount, then, on your proposal?
24. 24, 276.
And that's above the 3%?
Above the 3%, yeah.
Board's pleasure. Now, is this gonna come back next year again? Now, is this gonna come back next year, again?
Well, it shouldn't, I think the only thing we'd have to look at next year is what the across-the-board would have to maintain for that group, to make sure that we maintain those percentages.
And Susan, while you say we're gonna try to finalize everything today, we all, I think, know too, that on Tuesday, when you bring it back for us, there are things subject to change, should anyone want to have some rediscussion on it too, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Make sure Dana hands that on the agenda next week.
I will.
Okay, board, what's your pleasure on this one, that Debbie just spoke of?
I'll, I'll move to accept, uh, HR's, uh, recommendations on the non-bargaining deputy sergeant pay scale.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any more questions or comments?
Yeah, I know, I'm not sure I have all the detail on that, so I'll get, you, Deb, and put it all in the motion? Okay, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Tralka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, now, what do you got?
Uh, we need department heads, the five individuals, directors, department heads, whatever you would like to call them, uh, and, uh, had them in at three percent, I increased it to four percent, um.
Hey, board, what's your pleasure on that?
And you increased them to four, really, just to, because we've done that with the elected officials?
I increased them to four, as Debbie mentioned, since they don't have a pay scale range, uh, so you could look at years of service, if you want to do something different based on years of service, or if you just want to treat them all equally this year, however you want to do it.
Board?
Make a motion, uh, for the three percent increase, without the one percent.
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Grant, you got that language, be for three percent then, for department heads.
And without, and why, the reasoning for not, with having the one percent, just curious?
Just, well, you, you guys said the two, what, we, we've got all different, we're across the board on, scattered everywhere on wages anyway, you know, and, and like I said, you know, every job I've ever had, I never knew what the other guy was making with, and, and sat on the board for Mr. Lincoln with, uh, twenty-two supervisors, and none of us make the same.
It'd give me a headache, wouldn't it?
Pardon me?
Twenty-two supervisors.
Yeah.
I would say it's being consistent in what we've done in the past, let them.
And it is Black Hawk County, in some ways, we are different, I like to look at the comparables.
Right.
Uh, I think the trends are gonna be about two-five, two-seven-five.
I do, yeah.
So.
So, they're well in range.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, roll call, Mr. Veder.
White?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, now.
Okay, um, so I think Bob's here, um, if you want to, uh, have Bob talk, and then we can go into capital.
Sure.
Four.
No, I heard she was forty-five minutes.
Fifty-four.
I think I'm an hour.
Yeah.
Well, I'll have, uh, I'll have Karen, you do the budget then, okay, I just wanted to share some, some information, and really, to the extent that you're interested in that this morning, I just, I've got the annual review, um, and some budget information, that will kind of, uh, give you an overview and a context for what, uh, what Karen's gonna present.
We could probably all move on to the additional four thousand for libraries, not to rush Bob.
I thought we took care of that already.
Well, is anybody, are we okay, I mean, as far as the things on the list, and that one's good to say.
I thought we wrote it on that list the other day.
Anything else on that list you need us to do? Take a look at, we're good with everything else, or?
Yeah, I mean, you, these were the things we put in there, um, you know, after we look at capital, if there's something, kind of comes back to the rate again.
No, we're good, I just didn't want to rush Bob, and thought we could do something else in there, we could.
I know we had that one already.
We did.
You're not gonna go through this whole thing, are you, Bob?
Verify it's in.
It was already in my numbers to begin with, so it wasn't a change.
Nope. Leave it alone, leave it alone. Everybody holds breath, or Tom cuts it, yeah.
I don't, have I gone through the annual report with you?
Are you able to see your stuff, okay? With the rub off? Yeah, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I haven't done the annual report with you.
Unless you want to pull it back on, or can I ask him to?
No, okay, all right, so, we're good now, okay. I'm sorry, Deb, am I interrupting you now?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm on?
Introduce yourself.
Right, Bob Lincoln, County Social Services, um, so, uh, you've got the, our brochure is attached to the top, uh, and again, the brochure is, uh, kind of a, a nice overview to kind of give a, a context of what we do, uh, again, the, the brochure reflects, the first, uh, column there reflects our reorganization, that shows us, uh, working in quadrants now, and then our care teams, you know, cross those county lines within those, uh, those, those quadrants, and then the, the central one is the crisis services, and, and that's the area we continue to try to, uh, build up our, our capacity and that safety net for folks, and then the last column talks about what are we doing in the way of public education, uh, public awareness of mental health and disability needs, and that's primarily our, our Mental Health First Aid Initiative, our collaboration with the Area Agency on Aging, and our collaboration with the Brain Injury Alliance. Uh, so, the, the, the next document is your, is the annual report, this is our formal, uh, we, we, we report, we submit to the department every year, um, I'll just pull up some highlights for you, uh, the first section, services provided in the fiscal year, really talks about the services we provide, and the, uh, talks about the access standards, so our charge is not only to make these services available, but to make them available close enough, uh, for folks, and then make them timely enough, so, we're, we're trying to make sure folks can get to them, and then when they get to the service, that they get service in a timely, uh, fashion. If you flip forward to page ten, then it tracks, uh, the number of, of folks that we serve for each specific, uh, service, and again, it gives you some detail and complexity of the kind of services we provide, uh, to support people in the community, everything from outpatient mental health services to institutional care at, uh, at the mental health institutes, but if you look at that first number, six hundred and eighty-two, for psychotherapeutic treatment outpatient, that means there were six hundred and eighty-two adults with mental illness, uh, that we helped with our outpatient services in last fiscal year, and then as you move across those columns, you see a column for children, that's the C, you see a column for ID, which is intellectual disability, column for DD, which is developmental disability, and another column for brain injury. Developmental disability and brain injury, those are discretionary, uh, populations that we serve, always have served, but not all regions do, uh, and there isn't a legislative mandate to do that. On page thirteen, it shows the total of unduplicated count of folks that we served last fiscal year, which was five thousand, six hundred and ninety-three individuals were, were touched by our, uh, agency in some manner, and then the next chart then shows you how much money we spent for, uh, that specific service, so the three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars is what we spent for the six hundred and eighty-seven people who got that service, so if you want to break down to that detail, then on page, uh, page seventeen is the revenue, kind of why we're, why we're here today, um, going back some years, uh, so, uh, mental health disability services was a combination of property tax dollars and state dollars, with Medicaid expansion, the state essentially stopped sending any money to us, so now, uh, nearly all of our revenue is dependent on the property tax that you, that you levy on our, our behalf. Some of the other receipts we receive is, uh, we do do a little, a few Medicaid services, we still have a small case management program, so we get some Medicaid reimbursement, and we are getting reimbursement from two other regions, uh, that have expanded, uh, or have uh, bought into our iStart program. Last year, we spent twenty million, six hundred and ninety-four, uh, twenty million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and ten dollars, uh, we ended the year with a fund balance of six million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, that's about a thirty, thirty-five percent, no, thirty, thirty-two, to be exact.
I'm just doing that, figuring out these games.
Okay, I, I shouldn't do that to you, Karen, every time I don't know something, I expect Karen to know it. Page eighteen, uh, so, these are the, uh, uh, the way we request, uh, dollars from you is on a per capita basis, and again, that, I think that's unique to the mental health and, and disability services, but that came out of, uh, mental health redesign, a more equitable way to raise money for, to serve a population versus, uh, supporting a, a property need, uh, so, we take the, uh, population, the most recent population, from the Census Bureau, we take that times whatever the, uh, per capita levy set by the CSS Board, that Supervisor White is a member of, and the new, uh, and on the executive committee now, congratulations, glad to have you in that position. Uh, so, last year, uh, we raised thirty-three dollars and eighteen cents per capita for our members, we had Butler County, that was still below the per capita, because they were under the old dollar cap, that has, that legislate, legislatively has been raised now, and Butler County is now levying the same as all members, and that was true of TAMA. Kasuth, that you see highlighted, uh, they chose to only levy twenty-six, uh, dollars and twenty-four cents per capita, and that's the nature of the mediation that we're involved now, um, uh, how are they gonna make up that, that difference that they did to levy? So, uh, we, we brought in fifteen million dollars, uh, last year from our levy request. The regional per capita target there, the forty-three dollars and sixty-five cents, that is our region's cap, that's the most we can legislatively levy, uh, under, under state levy. One of the fixes to the system would be to get that cap the same for all regions. Unfortunately, because they didn't want to raise property tax, they kind of locked people, locked regions into where they, they were historically, we have some southern, uh, regions that are locked in at, at thirty dollars per, per capita, which is making it a challenge for them, so, we're not, uh, we're not really even bumping up close to our, our cap at this point, which is a good thing.
Yeah, Bob, on the actual levy that we have now, that you said, the thirty-three, eighteen, is that the highest we've ever been at, from the levy, the region has been, they've been at higher?
So, uh, so historically, when the regions were, were created, our cap was forty-seven, forty-seven, eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why we still keep the eighteen cents, I don't know why we never rounded that off, but that's where the eighteen cents comes down, uh, thirty-three was actually the lowest, uh, we've ever been, and then in this year, uh, we're actually at thirty-five, eighteen this year, and then the, the recommendation for next fiscal year, or, or ask, is thirty-five, eighteen again, keeping it the same.
Thank you.
Um, and then the rest of that, that report just goes into more detail, gives you some outcome data, and some narrative, um, I won't, I won't go into any more detail on that, unless you have any questions.
I do, on the question.
Oh, good.
You talked about the population that Black Hawk County serves, that not other counties do.
Yes.
The DD and the, um, brain injury.
Yes.
And I see you've got about twenty-some plus, um, individuals that we helped in that, is that kind of a standard number, I said, or is that a high number, low number, or, that we've assisted with that, I think you've mentioned?
It's, it's actually, it's actually pretty, pretty, it's been pretty consistent over the years that we've served that, that population.
That same population, okay, are there people out there that we're not serving, probably for any reason, I guess, um, that we know of?
Yeah.
Okay, if they're there, we can serve them, you're happy to do it, right?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And other counties haven't chosen to do that, do we know why, I mean, obviously, it's a very needy population.
Well, it's, um, it's, it's kind of, the analogy I would use is with children's services, um, we've, we were piloting expansion into children's services, because we had the resources to do that, uh, but then we, we stepped back, because the other regions weren't following us, uh, I think there's always, there's always a concern that the need is going to be too great, and if we open that, uh, it's gonna swallow us up, uh, and I think unfortunately, what we find is that if you just open it up and serve those folks, it's not as, as expensive in the, in the, in the short run, so, but I, I appreciate you asking about that. What, the other kind of dirty little secret is, other regions, uh, if they find somebody that's really struggling, they just.
Send them down.
Uh, put them in another category.
Oh.
So, there's some of that going on too, so.
So, so the total cost for servicing those individuals is about one point one million? It, it, when I'm looking on page sixteen, for, uh, DD and?
Brain injury.
DI?
Brain injury.
Yeah, brain injury and development, yeah.
Um, let's see.
Money's efficient.
I, we're looking for the, uh, let's see, for the B, brain injury'd be, uh, the two hundred and seven thousand.
Yes, okay.
And for the, uh, DD, it'd be nine hundred and forty-three, the one point two million, that's our administrative, administrative cost.
Gotcha, so I just, and that's the question I had, was how come we spend more per cap, or, uh, it, it impacts our county tax rate?
Mm-hmm.
I, I was just curious, how come Black Hawk County spends more, what's, what's the reason why?
Yeah, Susan, you want to?
Um, earlier, Bob, that, um, graph, you know, that I showed, uh, sent you comparing us to, uh, to the other counties, are, at least the other, some other, um, of the larger counties, um, oh, Rory, can you put the screen back up?
Number one, we've got more services.
I think you might.
Yeah, I was just, I, I didn't know why, and I.
I think one thing that you, you touched on a little bit, is that some of those other counties are locked into a lower rate with which, which they cap out at, they can't go beyond that, so even if they wanted to provide more services, they're, they're limited, just because of the way the system was set up, so, I'm not sure if Johnson County is maybe one of those, um.
So, Bob, I, this is the, what I sent the board, this comparison, and, and this is the regional per capita max, uh, and, and we are higher, uh, in that per capita max, but our actual levy per capita is higher, um, than some of these other counties, and looking statewide, you know, I know we're higher, our tax rate, so not only the, uh, the levy per capita, but the tax rate, um, for Black Hawk, ends up being much higher than, than other counties, and.
So, we were just trying to understand that, Bob, why, why?
So, so the factor that's in play there is the, is the, the fund balance, there's regions that are, that are sitting on, uh, in some cases, two hundred percent fund balance, and they're not required to spend that down, so they're not, they're not levying their, their budget, they're levying what they need to supplement, what they're gonna spend during their fund balance, so, if you, if you compare us to expenditure data, uh, in FY eighteen, we spent forty-six, or, we spent, uh, forty-three dollars per capita, uh, Polk County spent forty, uh, forty-six per capita, uh, South Central spent forty-two dollars per capita, and then the, the other, the other regions were coming in at about, I would say, between thirty-three and thirty-six per capita, and that's actually about where we are this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what we, what we were buying last year, uh, we were spending about a million dollars, which would be about two bucks per capita, in launching, our, launching our Certified Community Treatment, uh, that was here in, in Black Hawk, and has done an amazing job, but that was, uh, that was a budget overrun because of the contracting problems with the managed care organization, and getting that covered by, by Medicaid, also our Crisis Stabilization Center, uh, we've been subsidizing that at about one point two million dollars, which is about another, uh, two or three dollars per capita, that is now starting to get reimbursed by, by Medicaid, and we're seeing that, that expenditure go down, so, the, the other thing that's hard to, it really is kudos to, to you, is that when we created our, our region ten years ago, uh, we, we took the dollars, we had a- created our, our region 10 years ago, we, we took the dollars we had available and we made investments in these services. We launched an autism center. We, we were the first to start a crisis stabilization, 2012. We started the iStart program that's, that's starting to be expanding now. What other regions did was they hung on to that money, and then now they have to invest in, they, now they have to start investing up to where we're at. We've got our services up and running. We'll be able to bring our, our levy down. So, I'm guessing every year, we're going to be closer to that 30, 35, $35. So, the, so to your point, those, they were pre-taxed. They were taxed earlier. They're just spending the money.
Yeah, I'm paying on the front end.
Okay, thank you.
And that was, that was an act of the state legislature that required, that happened either this last year or the year before. It said the fund balances had to be spent down, which unfortunately makes it hard for the regions to plan for big investments though, without having big fluctuations.
Yeah.
And I have to kind of call our, my colleagues out a little bit. We kind of, we're kind of our own worst enemies. We, we say we have to have the money, and then we, we sit on the money, and then we don't invest it, and then, and then the legislature says, why do we have $120 million sitting in, in the coffers? And again, to CSS's credit, we have been spending down our fund balance. We didn't, 504 didn't mean anything to us. We were, we were moving, moving that levy down, trying to equalize the levy across to all, all members and making real good investments in services.
But early on, they put it, they gave you kind of an unrealistic timeline to do it. It was not something that you could do more gradual, but you've done a great job with trying to do that, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and again, I think what we've done is anticipated the legislation, the 2456 really just affirms all the work that we've, that we've done. So, anyhow, thank you. You bet. Great question, though. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
At that level of, oh, I'm not, are you?
He's not me.
No, no, no.
So, nothing, I don't think anything else in the, the annual report. I don't want to-
You mentioned the mediation too with one particular county. Is that close to being resolved, or is that?
Well, what do you think? We had a meeting yesterday.
Yeah, I know.
They said it'll be done by June.
Okay.
I think-
And we're going to hold them to it. Well, and that, and by July 1st, it'll have to be done by the end of June because they're, they're looking at moving on, but even if they move on, they're still going to owe us the money. They'll still owe us the money.
Have to pay it back. Okay.
Yeah.
And we're sad about the whole situation. They're, the people that are looking up at moving out of our region and joining some other one, it's going to leave Emmett County out there all by themselves right above.
Uh-huh.
But we can still keep them.
Oh, yeah, we're going to keep them.
They stay on you.
That's a long, long drive.
But I, I just meant, just because they're kind of don't have the same board.
We took our first, but two people in the beds yesterday for the first time out at the, uh, new, new stuff. We started out at the north, or out at, uh-
Yeah, a lot of good news.
Yeah.
We opened the, the sub-acute unit.
Oh, yeah, very good news.
First two customers yesterday.
Yeah, that's, again, that's, that's amazing. We're the, we're the second this time. We're the second sub-acute unit to, to open. Hillcrest had, had opened, uh, six months ago or so, maybe? And they had, they had a horrific problem with, with billing to the MCOs, and they kind of helped us get that issue covered, but kudos to that group out there. They just keep, keep charging forward.
Well, kudos to you as well, because you'd mentioned February was going to be your timeline for getting it up and running, so hey, it's there. That's great.
I met, I met a timeline. Boy, that doesn't happen very often.
Thanks.
Uh, this, the page I handed out to is our, is our financial snapshot. We came through quite a, quite a kind of a retrenchment, if you will, this, our, through our reorganization this last year, and we wanted to create a document that was reliable and concise for our stakeholders, so they, they knew where we were financially. So, at the top left, it shows where we are year-to-date, so it's 50% of the year, so it's through the end of December. Bottom right, it shows how much we've spent of our budget, 43%, uh, and then it shows what we spent this current month. And we've really, uh, we've got a great finance team that's, that's trying to pay every provider every month, so, so a month is as reflective as possible of our actual experience. So, in December, we spent 1.2 million. In, in November, we spent 1.2 million. And then if you look at the claims clear up to real time, we spent $1 million in January. So, we still see our monthly expenditures tightening up as we leverage folks, not cutting anybody off services, but we're leveraging them into their Medicaid services, and we're, we're also, again, the, the crisis stabilization center is doing a great job of, of billing, billing Medicaid. We used to pay them in, close to 100,000 a month. Our, our last bill was like 53,000, so we're, they're really taking a, a bite out of our obligation there. And, and that's really how the system should work. Our dollars should be used to get the program up and going and then getting Medicaid in there to sustain the program long, long-term. Our cash balance is, then we have 6.3 million left to spend until our next property tax collection. So, again, back to the difference in the numbers, we're at a point now where we're not living off of our fund balance. We're, we're living off the, the levy that we're, we're generating, so that we're, we're not going to drop the levy and bring it back up. We're going to, we, we might be able to go down a little bit more, but we're going to try to keep it as level as possible for, for the property taxpayers. Any questions about that? That document?
And then the last one I wanted to share with you is what we use to build our budget for this year. Let me share in between.
See, this, this first column is the same column that's in our monthly summary, and then we reestimated based on our actual experience so far this year, where we think we're going to end up. So, we budgeted 18.3 million. We think we're on track to only spend 15.6 million. So, that's compared to, I, I told you in our annual report, we spent 20 million. We've taken nearly $5 million out of our, our expenditures, again, because we've got those ACT programs going. We've got, we're, we're getting the crisis center, um, on Medicaid. We had some of our large residential providers downsize to 16 beds, so they went on Medicaid. Prairie View, we, we've reduced our census there, and so our, our care team has just done a marvelous job, again, to better serve our constituents, make sure they're, they're getting the benefit of their Medicaid and really taking pressure off of our budget so we can, so we have the resources to invest in the new, new services we're charged with. So, to that point, the budget we're, we presented to the CSS Board is this gray area, keeping the levy the same, and then we just built in a 3% inflation factor with the main ongoing investment of mobile crisis. That's the third lineup. That's kind of the last big piece we have to introduce to our, our system. The East Central Region and Johnson and Iowa City, they've done a great job rolling out their mobile crisis, and they've been doing it for nearly three years now, and, and they've got really good data and got a good provider in place, so we're really anxious to, to use, use their experience to, to launch our mobile crisis this, this next year. But there isn't much Medicaid reimbursement, so that, that million dollars is probably going to, going to be an ongoing expense for us for a time. But we, again, we focused on getting that, that crisis stabilization platform, so when we do do mobile crisis, we, we've got some place for, for folks to go.
Bob, are you thinking like that mobile crisis would be avail, would be start operation like July 1 or later in the year, or?
We're going to start starting.
Start starting.
Start starting.
It will prob, what we have to figure out first is will, will we need to do an RFP or will we just look at expanding in this existing service provider? So, if we do an RFP, we, we probably couldn't get that done until, I'm thinking late summer. But, and again, we've got to get stakeholders, and I think some of the other regions, because of our geographical nature, we might launch quadrants instead of trying to do the whole, because it's really going to be a question of staff and training and, and getting people hired and dispersed so that they can be available. And what mobile crisis is, simply put, you, you call the crisis line, and within an hour, somebody will be face-to-face. Some of the impressive information I got from the East Central Region is they, they found the schools to really benefit from the service, and they typically respond in pairs and, and go in and provide the backup that the schools, the teachers need to de-escalate situations and take care of folks, and, and I think that would be a, a great opportunity to really start filling in our, the needs for our, our children.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so then, then you'll see down there, we have the one-time money. So, what we're targeting for next year is, is we have 1.6 million that we're looking at, if we can get these other programs launched, that we, they should be Medicaid services once we get them up and, up and running. ACT stands for Assertive Community Treatment Team, and again, that's that team we started here. We still need one in Mason City, and we'd, we'd like to have one in the northeast area as well. And then we're looking at trying to ramp up another access center in the Fort Dodge area to kind of mirror the one we're, we're doing here in Waterloo. And then that 608,000 is if, Kasuth, Winnebago, and Worth are the three counties that have given formal notice of leaving the region June 30th, but they haven't been accepted in another region, so by code, they will become orphaned counties, um, July 1st, and then the department will have to determine where they'll be served until that is resolved. And so, I think those conversations are going on now.
Something somewhat unrelated, but I said you had talked about the council of services becoming an employer of record at some, is that still a plan or something that you're working on, or is that a?
Yeah, we've, so the CSS Board retained Paul Groof, an independent HR consultant, and, and his charge is to present a proposal to do that July 1. Again, our board has been wrestling with it because of, you know, just, just transitioning from being individual counties to being a region has its normal cultural challenges, but now I'm hearing it from the other regions as well, that counties are kind of tired of being the employer of record for the region, and they're saying, why don't you guys hire your own folks? And, and we, and we asked you to do us a favor by hiring somebody that works in, in southern Iowa. So, we're just maturing as an organization where at some point, this is going to happen, and when does it make sense and how does it make sense? And how do we take care of our good, good folks? So, we, we've got a HR committee with our staff working on it. The board has an HR committee that's meeting, and then I, I think actually, the March meeting, we're going to try to block off some time for the board to, to really hash it out and put some information forward. So, if you're interested in that subject, you can, you can watch that meeting.
Thank you.
That'll be in Allison, I believe, isn't it? Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
What's that?
February.
February, me. Okay, that's right. I was just, because I had a meeting yesterday, I thought, yeah.
The January meeting was yesterday.
Still February meeting, yes.
Weather.
The weather.
Yeah.
Iowa.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks very much.
Karen, did you want to present?
Karen, yeah.
That was it.
That was it?
Yep.
Yeah. If you want to do it again. Double jeopardy. Rory, can you bring my screen back up?
Well, speaking to Lori, thanks to the maintenance of helping us with our new office. They do the lighting and the painting, and the phones are working, and we're just, just really so grateful to have you in this space.
Okay. Thanks. Have to get out and take a look at it.
Yeah, we're bringing more of our partners together, so we're better collaborating. Oh, that's very good.
Maybe we could hold a stepping up meeting out there?
Yes.
Would that be good?
Okay. Thanks. Well, um, we can move to a discussion on capital now, if you like. Let me fill up a couple things. Okay. Whoop. Sorry. Let me go to this. Okay. So, first, I guess, I, I just want to talk a little bit about, I had sent you some information on an idea that I have. I, I brought it up in the past, but I think this year, we're in a position where we can do this if we want, and what I'd like to do, what I'd like to see us do is take a different approach to capital budgeting and planning. And basically, what I want to do is use our capital projects fund for that. In the past, we've only used, we have our capital projects fund, we've only used it for bonded money. So, when we bond for a project, we put those funds in the capital projects fund. It's restricted for capital projects, and then we spend it out of there. What I, what I'd like us to consider doing is, is doing that each year in the budget. Basically, based on our five-year plan, budgeting a, and I guess, let me back up. I guess I'm not making sense, but the reason, I guess, I'm suggesting this is that our capital expenditures are going to fluctuate every year, you know, depending on the projects that we have. And so, I know you can't see this very well, but let me pull this up. So, in FY17, our total capital expenditures that we budgeted for was 4.2 million. We had, some of that was reimbursed, that was the year we had Hartman. FY18, it was 2.4, and FY19, 1.1, and then FY20, based on the department's request that they've submitted so far, it's, it's about 2.8. And again, some of that is going to be reimbursed by revenue in conservation. But basically, you know, we've had some fluctuations, we've had some high-dollar things that have come up in the past few year, few years, and as we look at our budget, in order to budget for something like the jail security system or the parking lot that we did, those fluctuations, we, we will either have to have our tax rate go up and down for those, or we will have to look at using general fund reserves or some other, or delaying capital projects, some other option. So, what I'd like to see us do is now that we have built up some of our, some reserves in our general fund, is to take a portion of that and put it into the capital projects fund to start a beginning fund balance that we can use going forward. It's restricted for capital projects. Then, take a look at our five-year capital plan and determine a level amount that we want to budget for each year, you know, based on that plan, whether it's a million, whatever that number is. Then, each year, we, we decide which projects, you know, we're going to do that year. Maybe we're only going to spend 500,000, maybe we're going to spend a million and a half, but we're going to budget a million every year so that as those projects go up and down, you know, our taxing for it remains level. And I guess that's my, my approach. And, and because we've, have some reserves now built up, we, we're going to have some funds coming from the Country View sale, we're in a position right now to do that. It will, it will mean that we need to develop a plan though, so that we can determine what that amount should be, you know? Right now, I'm not sure. Should it be a million, you know, where should it be? And that can be adjusted. So, every year, ideally, we want to have our plan reviewed and brought to the board in the fall, then it can be adopted by the board, that we can use it in the budget season in January and set that amount. And so, as we go forward, if we need to increase that a little, it, it's not going to be a drastic increase. It should just be, you know, we can make some minor adjustments to that as we go forward. So, it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't go from, you know, 1 million to 2 million.
So, what are you thinking about this first year? How much?
Well, it, it kind of depends on what we have for Country View, but it, it's also, I mean, I, I at least think we need to put a half a million in the capital projects fund. You know, if we want to start with a million, we could do that, but a half a million would get us started. get us started. We still in this year, though, we've got some, you know, and if to keep the tax rate down and looking at the list that we had when we had maintenance here, there's some high, you know, potentially high-ticket items on there. And we need to discuss how, you know, if the Board wishes to do those projects, how we want to pay for some of those. But then my thought, looking at where we have been in the past on tax asking. So down below here on this spreadsheet, up above is what we budgeted for. And then there were there were items that we budgeted to take out of reserves and items that were offset by revenue. So basically, the amount that we have included in our tax askings the last several years has been over a million. And FY18, it was as high as 1.8 the year we had the jail security. But we had 1 point, about 1.3, 1.8. Last year, just a million, little over that. So what I tried to do is to get that number down to around that million-dollar level. And so I do have an amount, you know, based on the projects that we looked at, and we're going to go over all of those. We would have to use at least 400,000 out of general fund reserves. We also have, we do have, we set up, so we have a couple different funds. We've got the basic capital projects fund. We also have a a capital technology fund that we established when we had the funds that we taxed for the tax administration software. And then that project, you know, took longer to do. So we set those funds aside. They're in that restricted fund. We have a little more in there than what we need for the tax administration software. And so I do have, and just to try and, when I was working, trying to get the number, I do have a couple of IT projects that could come out of that fund or, you know, some other, you know, general fund reserves.
How much is in that?
500,000, yeah.
Okay, I mean, we put it in a couple of years.
I like the plan. I I would, everyone would like to proceed this way because then we would avoid these fluctuations throughout the future years. We may not have the capital projects locked in right away, but we'll still have say in the capital projects as we proceed through the budget year.
Are we, once we determine what you want to put in, or the Board wants to put in in a year, are we going to kind of have a cap? Or is this just going to let it build up to 3, 4, 5, 6 billion dollars? Or just say we didn't have any capital projects for two years. Are we going to let this keep building? Or do we want to set a cap on that fund?
Well, we we could. So what I would want to do is take a look at the plan every year and determine if we think we have more money than we need, you know, looking out of the five years. That's what I'm saying, you know. So if we're doing a million every year and then, you know, in a couple of years, we take a look at the plan and we decide, you know, we've got too much, we don't need a million, we'll lower that to 700,000 or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, you know, I mean, that's the way we would we would operate.
Because obviously, we could have some high-ticket items as we look at five years or 10 years or whatever are coming up.
Yeah. And hopefully, we've taken care of a lot of our high-ticket items over the years.
We have.
You know, I I might be able to support if we put in 500,000 this first year. My only concerns, and I talked to Susan about this today, is you get too much in there, then you're hanging on to the taxpayers' money.
Right.
And you're taxing for it. And you add that with the reserves. Now you're holding too much of their money and taxing for it when we really don't need it. So there's a there's a fine point that we're going to have to keep it, you know. Like I said, either cap it or or sure, we can do it this year with the proceeds from Country View.
Well, we've got excess left from other years.
Plus, you plus you got a reserve that, in my opinion, is way too high and 30% that needs to be drawn down. So that's that's the only thing that I see that we'd really have to watch because it's nice to have that money if you're going to do it, but
Yeah.
It's it's kind of like a slush fund is what it is and it's coming from tax dollars. So I think we're going to have to be careful there.
I think that's why we have to do a good job of balancing and looking at what we want our reserves to be in, where we can use other revenue.
I can't really think, and not going into much detail, we will talk to Rory again, but I can't really think of too many major projects coming up with what we've done over the last eight years. I'm sure there's going to be something out there, but you know, you brought up jail security.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we won't see that again for another 15 years. It's been 20 years since the original was put in there. And the boilers, the coolers, and everything that we replaced, I mean, we're we're pretty far ahead there.
Solar projects are stuff we'll have to talk about in the future.
There are, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I think there's always going to be needs that arise, you know, for discussion. All of our buildings, I mean, I know that we've done a lot of projects and improvements in them, but, you know, we have to continually invest in our capital infrastructure in order to, you know, maintain it and not, you know.
Let it fall behind.
Yeah, fall behind. So and I think part of this is having a good process to develop our five-year capital plan. And I, in my opinion, we need a little more of a collaborative effort in that, whether that's a committee or some kind of team that is assessing, you know, all the condition of all of our buildings. You know, I know Rory, he does a good job of of doing that. But, you know, I think it's before we come to the Board with, you know, here's our recommendations for a plan, you know, people who are in those buildings or have knowledge of our needs to assess that and determine our priorities, you know, whether there's something that needs to be, you know, fixed or repaired or done over at Pinecrest before we need to do something over here at the courthouse or the jail. I just think it would be better if we had more people working together on that plan and then a process where that group looks and determines the plan. We really need to get started in the fall or continually all year, looking at that so that we can put that together and bring it to the Board. I think, you know, part of the thing that came up the other day when we, you know, some of those items maybe the Board wasn't real familiar with. And it's hard to make a decision, you know, it's crunch time now during budget to to decide on whether we should do a solar project or, you know, renovate something that without having all the information ahead of time, I guess.
Yeah, I see. I would support getting started at like the $500,000 level because one one thing is does have the potential of, even if we're looking, we we're in pretty good shape. The most of the major systems have been replaced in our buildings. But in in 10 years or something, starting this now might get us in a position where we can handle a major project like that without having to either raise the taxes a lot or having to bond potentially because we've been building up this pot, waiting for those major things.
And and a lot of the infrastructure that we corrected, like the job or the security over there is 20 years old. We had boilers that we replaced that were 30 and 40 years old. So, you know, we replaced a lot of that stuff and hopefully they'll last, you know, for a while. But I, you know, it might make sense, but we got to really control that account and make sure it doesn't get out of hand and make sure that the projects are more needs than wants. So it's going to, it's a different theory and, you know, we can try it, as long as we don't get it out of hand.
I think we're in a good position. We are now, though, because we've been doing that. We've been looking at our reserves and where we're at and utilizing those. And like I say, coming up with a plan, I think we have tried to do that, but this just solidifies everything, I think, for us to going forward. You you mentioned, I think, having it in the fall, but I said, I think by the fall, we should almost be ready with the plan and all of us very familiar with what's on it by then. And so I'd like the opportunity, like whoever the committee or group is, that it comes back to the Board frequently, I think, to make sure that we're all on board and understanding what's kind of going on through the process and.
And I think Rory's done a fine job over the years, like the boilers or the cooling system were brought before us at budget time today, but they were for next year. So he was looking out that year, you know, on what's coming up and and that's how we prepared for it. So.
Well, unfortunately, if we'd had something like this in place, we probably would have avoided the spikes. We've had the spike, we had the safety, public safety radios, which we all felt were needed and something that we needed to do for for the public. But there again, then we had to raise taxes. Country View, we asked the taxpayers to take a chance with us last year. We hated to do it, but we needed to put money into the budget just to see if we could market the facility and they did. So.
Plus, the fact over the last few years or last five years, the bonding was the way to go because of the interest rates were below a percent. It was it was stupid not to, but now they're probably sitting up there around 3.5%. So it's going to cost you more now to borrow that money than it did two, three, four, five years ago.
And it's still nice to have it out there as a tool that we can use if we need to going forward. But, yeah.
Is 500,000 an accommodating number, Susan?
Yeah.
Well, yeah. So what I want to point out is, in the budget currently, this is the number I have. And I need to double check this, but this, anyway, 1,084,977 is what I, that's what I have currently in the numbers that we looked at. So, but that also involves, you know, some of the items on, at least the maintenance list, you know, we were a little unsure about some of the amounts. And so I I put in the total amount that we had on there. It didn't include solar, so that I know is a topic for discussion. But I have on the jail boiler, you know, needing to use reserves. So in order to get this number down to a million, I had to put some of these items up here that we would take from reserves. And so I have a couple of things that we always kind of use, the amount that, and we're going to look at each department and their capital just one more time. But the sheriff had, you know, some money for the range. The attorney had some money from his fine collection fund. So that those are the first two items. And then the election computers, when we did that last year, we we did budget to use reserves for that. We can do that again. We could use the technology fund for that 80,000. So I do have that coming out of reserves. The, one of the items that was also on the IT list was the Tyler Content Manager. If we decide to do that, we could take that out of reserves. And these were just suggestions. I mean, we can talk about all of these. But I needed to take some out of reserves to get down to a number that worked well in the budget. And so then I needed to take about 400,000 off of Rory's list out of reserves. The boiler, he had estimated in there at 492,000, I believe. Then some of the items on his list, well, one of the items, the VA renovation, we talked about them being able to raise some funds. So I took that reimbursement off. And then Conservation on their list have two projects that they're going to have revenue reimbursement for. So taking, backing that out to look at the actual number that we're taxing for, getting us down to just that right around the million.
So doing the scenario you have here, where does that put us with reserves?
So what we would need to do, if if we wanted to get this started, we would have to transfer some of our current general fund reserves into capital projects. So if we wanted to start with a half a million. But we'd also have to transfer this amount from reserves when, if we're going to do those projects, if we're going to keep all of this, all those items on the list, because that would use up that half a million right away. And we need to have some money in there to have a a balance so that we can, you know, maintain and and have, you know, a cushion for the fluctuations.
So what's the bottom line on taking out of reserves? What do you, what's your, the one thought or one?
Well, if you did everything that was on our lists.
Be the 2.7?
Yeah, well, it would be, it would be this total. I don't have it totaled up, but it's a little over half a million. Anyway, oh, four or five. Yeah, 600,000 or something.
When you're talking reserves, Susan, are you talking reserves that have the Country View 2.5 million in it? Or is that separate?
That's separate. I mean, so everything right now, well, except for Country View, is in our general fund.
Sure.
So we would transfer the 500,000. But then we would also probably need to transfer some additional, whatever we budget to take out of reserves. And this year, we would also have to transfer. So it could be maybe up to a million that we would need to transfer.
And where does that put us percentage-wise and with our reserves? You know, we've talked about that quite often and we're at a comfortable level for.
Right. So we were at, I'd have to go look. I'm going to say around 38%, but I'm, don't hold me that.
That's what I think we were.
And I can come back and give you some more numbers on Tuesday if we're looking
at this plan of how that would impact it. Then we have Country View. Right now, that's sitting in the enterprise fund. We're going to end up dissolving that. And of course, as I mentioned, we might have to put some back in mental health. We would put the remainder in the general fund. And it would, right now, you know, I'm not sure, but it's at least going to be 2 million. 2 million that we will, I don't know how it will be divvied up, but it could be closer to 3. The United Healthcare PMI is an unknown, so I don't want to throw out numbers right now. But that would then go into general fund reserves too.
I know you talked about.
So that could be part of the money that you transferred.
What's the plan on dissolving that enterprise fund?
Well, we, we have to wait a little bit to have this, you know, and I, we're going to have to main, I'm not quite sure. I need to talk to some.
Because we're still going to have some revenues and expenditures coming in and out for a while.
Right. And the way Jim Wilkes at Brighton kind of explained it, I mean, that that can go on because of the way Medicaid and those, you know, they make adjustments, you know, six months a year, you know, down the road. So I have to find out what we need to do, whether we maintain a small part of that in the enterprise fund until it, everything is wrapped up. But we could possibly transfer funds out of there, back to the general fund, you know, of course, prior to that. So I just need to find that out. I don't have that many.
I have a question. I know there's a number of VA Commission members here. Today, where the renovations came in, I think at about 242,000. Kevin indicated that he thought he could fundraise 135,000. Do you think that that's still a reasonable thing to go? Because I would, I just want to make sure we get the project done this year. And so I'd I'd personally rather just see us conclude the whole thing in the budget so that we're knocking walls down on July 1st and getting this going. And they could focus fundraising efforts on on furnishing the facility and making sure it has all the other things that they need. So I just, I'd like some indication from folks whether, I I thought that that seemed like a really kind of high number to say that you could fundraise 135,000 rapidly when I'd rather just make sure we're getting the, getting it done here. But I'd like to hear from Commission members what they think about the.
Does anybody know anything about that anymore?
Realistic fundraising.
You got, you got the numbers back on that, Rory, at 242,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, the actual numbers that I received were approximately 210,000 renovations.
Okay, 210, okay.
So when were you going to share that, today?
I I thought I shared it the other day.
I think you threw a number out. I think we just.
Let's let's hear from.
You want to see the the layout? Do you want to have that up on the screen? Does that matter?
Well, let's just see where we're at money-wise.
We can wait till we're there.
So I'm Commissioner Colonel Heidi Warrington. I have concerns that the commitments for money that we we might raise with changing director and everything else, those aren't hard commitments, they're soft commitments. I guess that's nursing parlance, the best way I could say it. It sure would go further if we could get the physical structure done so that the people who have indicated interest in donating money had confidence that, like we had one person say that they'd consider giving 35,000. I think it's fair to say that's more real if they can see that the structure is there, that when they give that money, it can buy, you know, either the computers or the furniture, whatever. Because otherwise, it it's it's just a piece of it and it's not far enough to to go and get the structure. So I think your idea is absolutely spot on. If we could fund and get the physical, the walls and stuff done. We got the layout from the contractors and the the only thing that I had concerns about the layout is we didn't, this this proposal. is we didn't, this, this proposed layout didn't give a private room for counseling, like for mental health that we had talked about. But it's very easy to take, to leave one of the existing walls instead of taking it out and just making one private room. That could be used also for when we have a veteran that needs another agency to come down and help them. Yeah, we've all got.
There's an office down there and that is the mental health.
No, the wall's coming out though. That's the problem. The heart, the dark gray, I don't know if we can put this up on the screen. I've got one for you guys.
You know, this is fine looking at this, but I think what we want to try to.
The real issues, the money.
To get a hold of that because I'm sure this is going to change probably two or three times.
That was the point I was going to make.
So I think Rory, what we need to know right now, or Chris has indicated he thinks we should put the 210 in there. So I guess that's really the issue.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
So part of what we're going to get to a little later is our debt service expenditures. And so because we had the bids on the Pinecrest restroom remodel came in lower than budget. Looking at our bond proceeds that we had from 2017, we will probably have about 160,000 remaining. So that is an option, I suppose, that if you wanted to get started on something right now, you could put, we would have to have another bond hearing to, you know, redirect those funds, but that, that might be an option.
So basically just leave that number where you got it right now is what you're saying? The 135 or whatever. I think.
Well, that would, that, I mean, if you wanted to use leftover bond proceeds for that specific project, I mean, that would impact the budget a little bit because I would, you would actually reduce it a little bit because you would take some of that out.
How much do we have leftover bond proceeds would be?
So the estimate with the new bids on the bathroom is around 160,000.
More than enough to offset the difference that she has up there. So I think your concern was if it wasn't fully funded, that it wasn't going to get done. Right, it's going to get done. And I think she's trying to tell you that we can go in at this figure and then supplement it as we go on. Because we've already had the bid opening for the restroom.
And we're real early on the process, I think, as far as.
And this is, this is going to change, I guarantee you.
Yeah.
So if we were using some of those bond proceeds, does that mean we could start, all right after we have a bond hearing? So we could get started even before July?
Well, provided the contractors and everybody else, all that has to be lined up, but yeah.
Yeah. Well, you haven't even put it out for bid, have you Rory?
No.
No.
No, he just got some numbers together for us.
Yeah. And like you just mentioned, Tom, this is going to change. I mean, even, even as of this week, if we end up doing the fiber between here and the Harbin Reserve, I'm being told that could quite possibly affect this area here, which is the existing IT backup equipment. So already, one week into it, we're already thinking, well, we might be able to keep this room. And this room could be an ideal place for your counseling center. So as we move forward, this, this was the concept and it could quite easily change.
Plus the fact that I think everybody has to keep in mind, there's a process that we're going to have to work through to get to this point. And it's going to take a little bit of a while to do that with your RFP, put together everything and then bidding it and then going through the bids and coming back to the board. So it's, I mean, it, it looks like it's going to be doable. It's just that we have to follow that process.
Yeah, effectively.
And I'm not really concerned, Chris, on the money part of it because we got a couple.
Bonds, October money for bonds.
And when you bid it out, that may affect if there's going to be some changes on here and so forth.
Yeah, we feel we did a pretty thorough job of looking everything. What, what's, or some of this cost or a lot of this cost is coming from is looking at the existing entryway into this facility. And so we had to take a hard look at the physical parking lot, which on here, you don't necessarily see that. But there are some changes that need to be made to that parking lot in order to make it ADA accessible. So we felt like we've covered our basis on this and we felt pretty comfortable about that number. But again, in the last week, that's already changed somewhat based on whether or not this fiber project's approved, so. But yeah, as far as the bidding process, just like any other project, you know, we would, we would put a, we would put our RFP together. And if our goal was to kick this out in July, we would start on that process right away.
I'm confident we're right on that right now, Chris.
Yeah, no, if we, if we can make up the rest with leftover bond proceeds, I mean, if that's, and that we've got the commitment from the board.
As long as the board is committing to this now, I mean, we haven't heard.
Good.
Well, and it gives time for fundraising too, I think, to supplement that, so that.
Plus you got, I'm assuming a new director coming in, is that correct?
Right. And I'd want to start them off with, you got to raise 135,000 right away.
No, but I'm seeing that individual may want a little input on this too.
Right, on the design and everything, yeah, but.
Okay, Susan.
Okay. Well, if you want, what we can do, because also on this list, on all of the capital requests that we've had, it's a combination of equipment, vehicles, capital projects. And I would not envision, you know, this plan that I have really is only for capital projects, not equipment and vehicles and that type of thing. So what we've always done in the past is go through the list of all the capital requests that have been submitted and just kind of make sure that the board is either okay with that total or if there's anything that you want to change. So if you'd like to go through that, we could kind of just look at each department. And you can let me know if you want to keep that in the budget or not.
Does the board want to take a five minute recess? Anybody?
Sure.
Let's take five minutes and we'll dig into the capital. Yeah, roughly quarter to, we'll get started again.
That's what we got for the 90,000.
Yeah, that's right. I was going to say, that's what happened there.
Okay, we're back now to recess. Susan, are we going to go over capital now?
Yes.
Okay.
So I sent this out. I compiled all of the departmental requests into one document. So we can go down just to make sure that you guys don't have any questions or concerns over any of those. The sheriff's total is 281,000. It's mostly vehicle replacement and equipment replacement. So, so for example, this would not be something that would be, this would stay, remain in the sheriff's department and the general fund. We wouldn't, it's not capital projects.
And range buildings are from his room and board that 50,000.
Right, right. So, so then I've broken that out if it, if I have it planned to come from reserves or some other source. So the taxing amount for that is 266,000. So is that okay with everyone?
The Glocks are the new ones this year. Apparently they have to be rotated faster than it every year. What's that, the only one is that safety equipment tactical. What do you say that was for?
I think, a lot of these are just every year. I don't know if there's specific things that he has in mind or if he budgets just that amount every year and depending on what his needs are.
That's good.
Yeah, okay.
The attorney talked about that discovery software, 40,000 coming from his fine collection fund. So I have that coming out of that reserves. Any discussion on that? And then consolidated communications, it really, they've already had their budget approved, but they had some office furniture in there, so I did.
But this was in their budget?
It's in their budget, so, but I did put it on the list because I always have. Information technology, and Kim went over a lot of these items during the discussion. And maybe the only thing that we need to look at and make a decision on is this Tyler content manager, unless you have any other questions on Kim's items that she has.
Can I just throw out, the technology fund is the classic place where I'd be putting money in for election laptops every year so that when that cycle and they have to be upgraded, it isn't a big fund change, so.
Yes, and so we could do that too. We could put a portion into, you know, we've got our two funds. We could put a smaller portion into the technology fund just so that we can, you know, keep that, maintain that level so that, yeah, when we have these, you know, when we need a bigger IT item, you know, we've got the funds in there. So when we have something like the tax administration software, something like that comes up, you know, same principle, we've got the level.
And especially the infrastructure for servers and that kind of thing, they have kind of the same time of time frame of life expectancy. So, you know, it'd be nice just to put in a little bit so that when it's that year, it's not a big.
I think that was what we initially wanted to do. We just never, yeah, we just weren't utilizing it and doing it going forward.
Right, yeah. So for her planned projects this year, any questions on anything on here? And like I said, maybe the only unusual or maybe up for discussion item was the Tyler content management software. I spoke to that and we had looked at continuing to use DocuWare or trying out DocuWare. But in my opinion, I think this Tyler content software would be a better fit for us for our financial system.
So it's really utilizing them two different ways, so needing two different packages.
Right, it's, it would be a different package for the financial system. And then DocuWare would continue to be used in the assessor and treasurer's office for document storage.
Yeah, thank you.
Digitization of documents.
Yeah, I'm okay with that one.
Rory, the boiler, is that original in the jail?
Yeah, we have three boilers over there. All three are original. One was actually, had a rebuild back in 2003, a pretty significant rebuild.
Oh, we're replacing all three?
All three of them would be replaced.
You indicated it's a different system.
Yeah, what we're looking at is a combination of boiler and domestic hot water heater. The domestic hot water heaters were actually, these are not original, but they were actually replaced soon after the building opened up. The original design, they found out very soon after they opened up, didn't, wasn't adequate to provide the domestic hot water for that facility. So essentially, they are original.
So basically, it should help the energy cost.
Absolutely, yeah. We did a pretty thorough energy assessment on the particular design that we specked out to come up with this budgetary number. And when we plugged the numbers in, we came up with about a $14,000 a year energy savings.
When do you plan on starting that project?
This one would have to be soon after the, after the physical year starts because this is going to be a bit of a unique project that we'll have to phase in.
How many months are, I mean, obviously, if you start July 1st, you're, you're on the clock right now.
Yeah, we, we don't look to this project to take a long period of time. It's just, we're going to have to take it probably in three different phases. Not saying that that's going to be drawn out for three months. It's quite possible we could get this turned around in a month, but it's going to be one phase, get that up and running. Start the second phase, get that up and running.
And you're able to do that?
Yes.
And run a system?
Yeah, it is going to be a bit challenging, but we do feel that the way we laid it out, that it is achievable. And Susan, I wanted to mention too, on the, the few of the blank items, I did go into.
Right, and I.
And I filled those in.
I had, I didn't update, I had already created this and so I apologize. Rory did update, has some newer numbers. Let me, let me go in there and pull up your. But basically on his list, and there were some items that didn't have amounts, and then I think he's changed some. But I did have these two items up here, the jail stove oven and the two-way talk-through communication system. In talking to the sheriff, those can come out of commissary, so I'm backing that out down here. And then, you know, through our discussions today, I can change these, but I had also put the VA revenue and then additional money that needed to come out of reserves down here. So right now, before Rory's changes, I was looking at including 331,000 taxing. But I guess, let me pull up Rory's new sheet.
As she's pulling that up, I did want to just, I know we spoke about this the other day, but if you notice the, there's two items in there with regards to the elevator over at Pinecrest. There's two items with regards to those elevators that they have a new code, code 2020, that two items were identified with those elevators and they're very significant, large upgrades that are, that are being, we're being told are required. We feel we have a very good opportunity for a variance on these two items. For an example, one of the items is a main sewer line that literally runs through the elevator pit of the main traction elevator of that facility. It would be a very large undertaking to reroute this line.
It's not a safety problem.
No, we, in working with our contracted elevator company, they feel I have a very good shot of receiving a variance from the board on this. So it would, it would require a trip to Des Moines to present our case. But that is why I did not put a dollar amount on this because.
Makes sense.
I feel pretty confident about that one getting pushed through. The other one is, the other blank there is a equipment room in our basement, mechanical room for the elevator. There are several overhead pipes, lines. They, per the new 2020 code, there's not supposed to be any of these pipes and lines in an equipment room. Again, it'd be a huge undertaking to make that modification, somewhat unrealistic. And we're not alone. Everybody who has elevators are being challenged with some of these new code requirements. But again, I, based off of conversations with our elevator companies, I also feel I have a good chance for a variance on this one as well. So I did not put any dollar amounts to those.
It makes sense, really.
Yeah.
And then I can come back on Tuesday, but you know, some of, some of these items, the smaller dollar things, wouldn't go in this capital projects fund. It would only be these, you know, the boiler, the carpet replacement, the VA renovation, the courtroom renovations, those, those types of capital projects. Platt room renovation, if we did the doors, those types of things, so.
Yeah, I'd like to hear more on those again. I was going to say on both of those, those were new. And I don't know if that means taking them off the list or just discussing them later.
What's that?
The platt room renovation and the entry lobby area door replacement, remember we.
I put them, I put them on because if you, if you look at them, they're horrible.
Oh, the doors.
They're, they're, it's a, it's an aesthetic thing, I realize, but it's, it's not a one. It's a, I feel it's a need to update that first floor and start on first floor and move our way up to replacing the doors. There is an officer, if you walk down the hall, or you see one door is blonde, the next door is brown, the next door is blonde, the next door is brown. Then you got, you've got a third color too, so it's time to start updating the inside of this too.
I was looking at, at the doors too. I think there can be some aesthetic improvements, but I was, I think from a little bit different angle. So this is, this building's like kind of a classic mid-century design building. And so like the blonde doors would have been part of that look. I think they're probably the original doors. And I think there's an argument to be made to maintain some of the integrity of that look just because it is a prime example of that type of architecture. And what could be done, the lesser prices, just take the doors, get them dipped and have them refinished all in the blonde.
And they function off the doors?
Yeah, in fact, in this project, we assumed leaving all the hardware, using the door closures, repurposing those. So really what we're looking at is just the physical door itself.
So replacing a physical door is approximately how much?
Well.
Just roughly?
Yeah, let me see here.
And there's some doors that definitely need replaced too. The, the entryway down there and the, both entryways, what I consider entryways, the old entryway and the new entryway, the inside doors need replaced on both ends to make, make it look nice.
Looks like the good children are that blonde.
Yeah.
Those are the.
Those doors are different.
I think what Chris is speaking to is more so the interior doors.
Like that, so, yeah, interior doors.
Yeah, the interior blonde.
Yes, and this is a combination of interior and entryway. And so the entryway are the more expensive. They're going to be a metal door is what I proposed, still having the glass. And that would be eight doors, so you would have essentially four on each entry of the courthouse.
Why didn't we replace those when we did the project? Why didn't we replace those when we did the project, put in the?
We said no.
That wasn't even looked at. We were focusing more so just on security.
Are they functional? I mean, what's the reason for them?
They're just, they're just ugly. They just don't look good.
It really comes down to aesthetics.
There's a lot of uglies in this building, trust me.
I think, that's just my opinion.
No, I.
And I'm here every day, and I see this stuff, and people complain about it, so I'm just bringing it to the board. And I think that door looks nicer than blonde door, excuse me.
I think some of the laminate or whatever they used on the exterior doors is peeling.
Some of those things.
Yeah, the, the inside entry doors, the laminate's coming off them. There's a gap underneath them all.
Why don't you research that, Rory? You saw, you heard two different scenarios, maybe refinishing. If the door is serviceable, otherwise we'll have to replace it.
So kind of, it's one of those items we talked about, leaving it in, maybe, but discussing it later and how we want to go forward?
The court administration remodel up there, I don't have a problem with that, but I'm, I'm still struggling with that glass. Thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, I'll get to those too, but I think there was also a question on the platter room. I just wanted to touch on that real quick. That is really an ergonomical thing. You, the employees that are in there, the island that they use to lay out their, their prints, books, what have you. They actually have to step up on a little step stool to be able to, you know, use that without hurting their backs. And so the approach that we took there was really to make it more user-friendly. Putting in two workstations that can raise or lower, having an island that's set at a better height, that's more user-friendly. And trying to repurpose the stainless steel countertop that we did here. Gosh, it's probably been five, six years ago. We did a new stainless steel top, so we'll try to repurpose that.
Is that a result, Grant, of a new employee coming on that job, or?
Not really. Actually, it was the, the employee who is staying on, who was there before, who was having more physical problems with it.
As more and more counties are digitizing some of those records and that type of thing, is that a change? I don't know if we're making, doing that as well.
That's something that is tied into the new real estate software, and that'll be, hopefully, something that will be there for going forward. How soon we can, you know, digitize our old records so that we don't have to use those books at all, you know, that's, that's a longer proposition.
But you're confident if we do this remodel over there, that if you get different employees, it'll be adaptable to everybody that comes over there?
Yeah, it, it's just going to make, make it easier for anybody who works there. I mean, we have those high countertops, and you can, if you go in there, you see that the employees in there are sitting at high stools because of the height of those countertops. And it's, it's just a question of how that is, you know, how that affects people that work there to have to reach up and get these very heavy books. I, I just encourage everybody to go over there and, and see how it works.
You mentioned digitizing. Are we doing some of that now?
Pardon me?
Are we making efforts now to digitize, Rory's?
Well, like I say, it's, it would be part of the, the new software that has not been put into effect yet. It's the, the real estate software that Kim's talking about with that package, and so that hasn't taken place yet, but that's.
So after, you thought that package would take about a year?
Transfer book, and so the information that they're handwriting in the old-fashioned books by subdivision, it'll be part of the system. And so, yes, we could stand them in, and I will tell you from my point of view, this is how, about what it is. So when I stand there, I, you know, just to go help them with a project, they are really pretty high up.
And the books aren't light either?
No.
No, yeah, and they're, yeah.
I just was asking, I guess, if we were going to be digitizing in the future, you know.
But they're still going to have those.
We need something to do.
Yeah, and I think.
For a while.
With those, it's a page of, you know, 20 transfers, so it's not indexed in that way. So it's going to be a little harder to do as opposed to taking a piece of paper that says, this is the deed for parcel 8913, blah, 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 versus going through and saying, oh, well, that house was transferred to this person in this subdivision on this date, and the owner's, so.
Okay.
It'll be digitized, but it won't be as.
Accessible.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Nouncing down to the two items that are court administration, we had the bullet resistant glass. That number was attained, obtained by a local vendor who came on site and looked at, I believe, the four areas. And when we say four areas, two of those are on first floor. So the clerk of courts area, they've got two windows, and then the other area is up on third floor, also clerk of courts. So that is based off of one estimate that was received from a local vendor.
I had a question still about the courtroom remodel. I still think you can come up, because I think the bench there still aesthetically looks fine.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me explain that one, because I've actually, last couple of days, we've, we've changed that number to 5,000. It was 17.
I was gonna say, that's pretty minimum.
Yeah, what we looked at doing is we took a whole different approach to this courtroom, and we're going to repurpose the existing bench. We're going to slide that bench over towards the north wall, giving us the amount of space that we need in between the jury box and that judge's bench. We're going to do this work in-house. We're going to build a platform with a ramp. So what that will do is it'll make it ADA, handicap accessible, not only to the jury box, but also to the witness stand, which is something this courtroom has never had. And we are also going to repurpose, if you recall, the picture I showed you with the rope in front of the audience. We'll put a new rope, but we'll repurpose the stands, which the tops of those stands are brass, the bottoms are not. But we can sandblast those and get those looking like new. So all of this work would be done in-house. And I did have, I, I have a rendering of this. I don't have it available as I speak. I'm still waiting on that. So when I get that, I'm going to send that to the board, because that'll kind of take my idea and put it on paper so you can all understand what we're looking at. But I think this is a very good approach, rather than trying to dump $17,000 into mimicking a bench that's, that we can easily repurpose. So, yes, hopefully that answers your.
Definitely.
Your question.
Oh, that takes us back to the resistant glass. We want that on? I, I don't see any reason to do it, quite honestly, unless you can make a good case for it.
I, I wish Linda was here. I'm really not going to make a case for that, because this was something that she, she had given to me and asked to put in front of the board, and that she would be here to make her case, which she did last week. I would say that was the case.
She was the messenger, that was the case.
It's board's pleasure on that.
I like it, but I'm concerned about the price.
I am too.
And it's just one area.
Yeah, it's the kind of, the kind of thing I don't want to do for just one part of the courthouse and not everybody.
Okay, I can't stay completely quiet on this. One of my concerns would be, we have other areas in this courthouse that would need this. The treasurer's office is a prime example.
Exactly.
If we're talking this kind of money for these smaller areas, I can't imagine, you know, if we wanted to take the same approach and do it in the treasurer's office, we're probably fourfold on this.
Yeah.
Well, and doing them one at a time doesn't make sense to me too, if it's, if it's a real safety issue, so.
If this is the, something that the board would like me to look at, maybe for next budget year, you know, we could take an approach of looking at it as a whole, and I could tell you that's going to be a very large number, but we can certainly do that.
It might be a good discussion at the courthouse security committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds really good.
And keep in mind too, it's not just the courthouse that we're talking about. Pine Crest has shown interest in this in the past as well, their reception areas, so. This might be, this might be a much bigger discussion than just these four areas.
Okay, anything else on there?
I only want to comment on the county tree program.
Yeah.
We kind of made light of it the other day. I assume some of this might have come from the fact that we talked about aesthetically making some areas that are in the courthouse or county properties look a little nicer. I wasn't thinking of just trees, and I, there again, I'd like a committee or maybe a group to go back and look. It was kind of landscaping, if we needed areas to be landscaped, not just putting 19 trees around. That was just my thought on.
Yeah, and, right, and the logic behind the 19 is that's physically what we can put on these downtown facilities as far as space. So that's how I came up with that. If you recall, originally, I think we had eight trees over the employee parking lot. That conversation involved into, again, looking at more of a bigger scale landscaping project. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to come up with that, so what I did is, let's look at trees only. I agree, I, I think we're going to have some support from Hawkeye Community College, the way it sounds, from some of their classes that, and I need to get that communication going. But quite possibly, we might have some options to utilize them to get some ideas flowing too, on a much bigger.
Rory was just sending a list out the other day on trees.
The tree program.
Tree program for 20 bucks.
Yeah, this particular, for, for our trees, there are some minimum specifications that we have to meet in order to assure that they're going to be successful, given the locations that they're going to be planted.
Yeah, the weather, the salt.
Yeah, we're told that you want to look at a minimum of two-inch round. And that's based off of working with the city of Waterloo's forestry department. And based off their knowledge and history, here's what you want to go with, so I can hardly argue with that.
I think it needs more information.
Yeah, for sure. I just thought I didn't want to, so all of a sudden, it's like this approval for trees, and we're ready to go with that, just because it's on. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, maybe on the, there's three items on here with regards to signs, kiosses, and directories that was recently added. We had a request to look at a digital directory for our main lobby. And I struggled with this a bit, just given the timeframe, but I found a wide range of different options that you can get for a digital directory. And I'm probably going to have to work with our, with Kim on this to make sure that, you know, this can be interactive. Maybe not so much interactive with the public, but interactive, meaning that, for an example, we can get on our server and put information on this digital display pertaining to maybe up and coming meetings or things that the counties are involved, counties involved with, whatever. So I came up with the $3,000, which was kind of the median range that I found for these electronic displays. And some of this depends too, if you go with a monitor versus a TV, so there's, there's a wide range of different options.
Only as good as who's putting the information in and keeping it updated.
That's exactly right.
It's not worth putting it up.
And placement and all those things factor into it.
I kind of foresee our information, you know, and I could be completely off on this, but I see our information being somewhat stagnant. I mean, everybody knows we have a board meeting every Tuesday here in this room, so I don't really see us changing things up too often. I see it being more maps of the various floors and where the departments are at. Maybe on occasion, we could put on there, you know, some up and coming, you know, maybe employee of the week program or something like that. I think we can get creative. So that's how I came up with that dollar amount. The other one is the signs. I was asked to look at signs on first and second floor. If you recall, back in 2012, we did a pretty extensive research on different signs. There is a sign out there that, I think at that time, everybody really liked the looks of it. It was more of a beveled-out-looking sign. You see them a lot if you look at hospitals and, you know, I, I see them all over the place, they're called vista signs. So we did a total count of signs, and that's how I came up with that dollar amount.
I think you're at 64,000 the last time we talked about signs.
Forty-four thousand.
Yeah.
And $320.
So this is really leading.
It's quite expensive, yeah. But, but if you recall, at that time, we were also talking kiosses, directories, displays, that type of thing too.
They were pretty elaborate, nice signs.
And that was pretty, that was all the, all the floors, basement, first, second, and third. So the other one, real quickly, here was.
Sidewalk.
The kiosk on second floor, and again, that, that was kind of an idea that we came up with in 2012. But if you, as you come off the elevators on second floor, if you can picture literally street signs, so you have a kiosk in the center saying, this way's recorders, this way's auditors. And that's, that's essentially what we're looking at there, is just a directional signage, waypoint, I think, is the.
They had signs hanging out now, don't they?
Yeah, but people come off the elevator and they're kind of.
Well, you can only go left and right. Right, you see the recorder sign hanging there, and you look left.
Well, actually, you don't see some of those signs, because they're actually the opposite directions. You have to get in the wall and look down, but. And then they stop at your offices. I was gonna say, the two offices that are closest, ask them where the office is.
I did, if you notice, I did change the number on the second floor carpet. I actually have two companies that I've been working with, and they came in fairly close. So I, I took the difference, and I think I lowered that by about $4,000.
Where's the carpet at, Rory?
If you recall, last week, I had that picture up. I might have it here.
Just roughly, where are you putting it on the second floor?
Everywhere except for the hallways. Obviously, this room, the assessors, we're not looking at putting carpet in the IT, MIS room. It's essentially everywhere else.
Do we get first dibs on that, since you've been telling me for three years we're replacing the carpet?
Absolutely.
Told me for 15 years.
Thank you.
If you think it's a needed, the carpet.
Yeah, in those areas, yeah, definitely.
Just like the doors.
Ugly, more ugly.
Yeah, we want blonde carpet too.
If we're gonna go aesthetic, then let's leave the doors out at Pine Crest the same, only remodeled, save that money. Leave things the same.
I think it had to be different doors there, though. I think it was because they needed new doors, didn't they? I think to make the entry like they want to, there was new doors. It wasn't, it wasn't like they were taking them out.
I don't bet on them for leaving it alone.
Leaving it alone? All right.
Build it.
Okay.
Let's leave them.
So it's every, the, the green areas were, we would not have carpet.
Yeah, that's fine.
Assessor just got done, and, yeah.
Thought they were going to get green carpet. I like that color, Rory.
Recheck.
Especially in Linda's office, it hasn't looked good.
This is going to be a, you know, goes without saying, a very challenging project as well.
Yep.
There's a lot of furniture, a lot of file cabinets. This would be something that we would phase in. I kind of estimated, once we start, we could potentially be looking at about 15 days. And I could be, I could be pretty conservative on that.
It needs it, it needs it.
Yeah, it does.
It's something I put, it's, it's been, it's been a topic of conversation for several years since I've been here, and so that's why we put it on for this year. Any other questions on that list?
Susan, what else you got?
Thank you, Rory.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rory. Okay, so then social services and DHS each had some money in for office furniture. And, and just stop me when you want to discuss something. So then the elections had 80,000 in for computers and, was that was just computers or printers? Last year, we had some, some money in, and we took plan to take it out of reserves. We did the same thing the year we bought the new election equipment. So, and I think to Kim's point about the technology fund, that's a perfect, you know, fund to have money in there so that, you know, when we do have a replacement for some big-ticket things like this and technology, that we can take it out of there.
So we're rotating computers, is what we're doing?
No, on this one, well, I'm sorry. On this one, they need to be compliant with Windows 10.
Okay.
So, and, you know, that's the piece where I brought that up, is, you know, okay, we have every five, six years, we may need an operating system to be secure. Well, she's got 240 some of them, so if we put enough away each time, so that when it does happen, we take it out of that instead of.
So we're installing the new Windows, or we're getting new computers?
We're getting new laptops for that operating system.
The ones that we're replacing are almost 10 years old, and we're almost there to get everything updated within the last couple of years, which will all be at Windows 10, which will be supported, which I believe, don't quote me on this, but through 2025. But then we would have to replace them all to get them compliant, which is also by code. to that they have to be supported.
That's been ten years since we bought those.
Some of them.
Some of them.
I was gonna say, it seems like we just bought those about four or five years ago.
We were half and half.
We didn't cover all the precincts to start with, we.
When I first started, we were, which was only a couple of years ago, we were operating half of our precincts on paper, and the other half on electronic laptops, so that's been the goal in the last couple of years, is to get them all.
I think originally, when we bought a certain amount, or half of them, it was kind of like an experiment, wasn't it, Grant? You didn't know for sure if you were gonna expand it to the rest of them, and apparently you did.
That's not exactly my recollection.
It's mine.
No, the, we always planned to have all of our precincts use an electronic poll book.
We ran into difficulties at the outset, because just given the age and the experience of our precinct workers, it wasn't a good fit for everybody to immediately start using those, and so we wanted to go at it realistically, and take an incremental approach, and like Karen said, when she started, it's one of the things that I asked her to set as a goal, I asked her actually to do it within one year, and she said two years was more realistic to try to convert the rest of the precincts over to electronic poll books, which we've done, and I think we've done it pretty successfully, but the technology continues to change, and our, some of our laptops continue to get older, actually, all of them do, but some of them are much older than others. Anything to add to that?
The only thing I would add to this is, out of that eighty thousand, a very small percentage is laptops, this is the bulk of this, is the moving from our label printers to HP printers. We spend a lot of money every year on the labels itself, but having to replace forms because of the changes to election, that we're constantly having to update and replace our forms, if we move to HP printers, then we're just buying the blank printer, the system works with the HP printer, but the form prints out as needed as we register voters, which makes so much more sense long-term.
It's about twenty-four thousand of that is for the laptops, right?
Yep, and the remainder is for the printers.
Right. Get it from the state.
Which is really a drop in the bucket after Rory's.
Oh, shit.
Oh, man.
Those teasing.
I wouldn't go that far.
To be fair.
So I do have this in the current budget, coming out of reserves, or the technology fund that we have, but as Kim mentioned, as well as funding a beginning balance in the Capital Projects Fund, it would be good to fund a little more into the technology fund, so that we have that there for some of these items as they, as they come up. Okay, then, there's the CEGIS allocation, that's every year, and then we have conservation, the total there is one million, three-hundred-eight-hundred, one million, three-hundred-thousand, eight-hundred dollars, and then nine-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand of that is, will be reimbursed, that's for the Wolf Creek Bridge, and a portion of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail reconstruction. So, total for tax askings comes down to three-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, eight-hundred, and Mike went over these projects when he was here for conservation, but if you wanna look at any of those again, or have any questions for Mike?
Yeah, a couple things, we did talk about, because, and we know we can't get to, we did take that forty thousand out for Hickory Hills.
Oh, that's right, oh, sorry.
So, and we know from a timeframe, we can't get to it, so.
That's coming out of the three-seventeen, then?
That's coming out of the three-seventeen, and then, another thing I want you to be aware of, I brought it up, at that hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-one-hundred-four, the thirteen-point-seven-five, we are, one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand of that is federal rec trail, and then we are chasing that other forty-six thousand. It was fifty-three, we've got a six-thousand-dollar private donation for the match, and we are chasing the other forty-six thousand, that could come off there, but I had to cover it with, since we have the rec trail money. And one thing that's not on here, that I wanna bring to your attention, as far as the solar panels and things go with the county as a whole, Hartman Reserve Nature Center has a private donor that has donated money for the system there, we're going to move ahead with that, you haven't seen it on any of Rory's presentations, because we took it off there, it's funded, and we're gonna move ahead with that, because we have the dollars to go ahead and do that, and the important thing about that is, is that there's an educational component there, that we wanna get into that nature center, it'll be a very hands-on situation for visitors that come to Hartman, that's another thirty thousand, too, so it's not on this, but it's out there, and we're going to go ahead and move forward with that, so, just a couple of things that.
It's a good idea.
Are kinda hidden in this thing, that you needed to know about, so.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you. Can you throw Kathy's in there, too?
Yeah, for educational purposes. Okay, so, going back to the spreadsheet over here, I can go back in and make some of those adjustments, but essentially, I still wanna get down to a million, so this four-hundred-thousand that I have in reserves, if I take some of, a couple of those things out, is gonna reduce that, but unless you want to, you know, adjust this amount here, that we're including in tax askings, I guess that's the question, and are you comfortable with the amount in reserves, it's gonna be a little less than this, once I make some adjustments, but.
Well, we have the funding in reserves, I guess, correct, so, I think, I'd like to see more probably taken out of that.
I'd like to see more come out.
Yep.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Craig?
I'd like to see more come out of the reserves, we're sitting, we're sitting good on reserves, we've retired over the last twelve years or so, to get it up, and now it's time to use some, and, and put some in, like you said, over the next few years, but put it in there with the idea that it's, the committee brings the stuff back to us, and we look at it with a realistic eye, you know?
I'd be comfortable taking more out of reserves, if we were making decisions about solar at the same time, because I just, I'm keeping that in the back of my mind, too.
I think we're still gonna have enough in there, that we can still look at solar, I'd like to see Kathy's solar projects put back in.
And we, I'm gonna pull up the engineer capital in a minute, I guess, I guess my question is, how much do you want to put into the budget, as far as taxing for capital, whether it's transferring to the Capital Projects Fund, you know, maybe not specific projects you have planned, or, because if we, if we reduce that, and we can use more reserves, or we can put more reserves into the Capital Projects Fund, I guess I would hesitate, if we reduce it too much, you know, what we've been taxing for has been, in the last several years, at least a million, a little more, if we reduce it too much, I'm afraid then we're gonna be looking in the future at then increasing it at some point, when we, after, if we use up, you know, too much of our reserves, and we wanna like, you know, put a halt on that, and then if we need to go back and increase, but, the million-dollar level was, I mean, and that puts us at that rate, but we can reduce it a little more, I guess, I just need to know how much.
I think we need to reduce that.
I agree.
Think we're hearing a consensus.
Well, can you put scenarios together?
Do you wanna figure?
Too late in the.
One, zero.
Go half a million out of there.
Well, I guess, maybe it would be better if I knew where you would want this number to be, because, you know, I can, I can make it be something, you know, using reserves, and then I can come back with, you know, if you wanna give me a couple different options, and I can come back with, you know, here's how much of reserves you would have to use, and where that would, you know, where we would end up at.
You have a dollar amount of reserves.
That's what I thought, too, if you, yeah, that's, I guess you're talking about coming back with some options, but you wanna know what number we wanna be at, as far.
Well, I guess, and my only caution is that, I would want it to be a number that we can kind of sustain, you know, I mean, unless you want to have a fluctuation like that, where you're gonna reduce it, you know, one year, and then have to go back and increase.
What would you be considering appropriate?
Yeah, your recommendation.
Out of the reserves, to bring that dollar amount down.
Well, I'm fine with these numbers as they are, I guess, that's my question to you, if you're not happy with them, then, you know, give me some direction on where you want it to be, I guess.
Well, I'm hearing that we wanna draw that down, so the question is, if you need a dollar amount.
You wanna draw the reserves down?
Yeah, so.
But that, no.
Question is, give her a number, and she can figure something up, and bring it back.
I guess, I would say, given the goal of trying to keep this relatively steady, and not have future big spikes, I'm comfortable with where the number's at.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd agree.
I'm not with the reserves at the level they're at.
And that's not a guarantee you're gonna have a spike that much.
We can't foresee the future, we're responsible to the taxpayers every year, we stand up, face them every year, we gotta face them on everything, we're the ones that answer for the tax increases for everything in the county, so, you know, we've been fiscally responsible over the last twelve years, now we're seeing the results of it, and it's time to pay it forward.
Why don't you bring two back Tuesday, leave it where it's at, the other one taking half, half a billion out, and another one, quarter of a million out, bring those.
Another half a million.
Yeah, show us some options, I guess, Susan.
Bring them back, and so they can have the chance to look at the numbers, then.
Okay.
But I do think we're gonna, should use some of that reserve, I'm concerned about spiking next year.
Well, we are gonna use some, just how much we wanna use, so, yeah.
I'll do some more work on how that looks, and how it affects, impacts our.
She's talking thirty-eight percent, and then we got the money from contribute, too.
Yeah.
First, we haven't really decided what we wanna do with contribute, so I do like the fact that it's out there, and we can make some decisions.
But the question is, something has to be done with it, it's just not gonna float out there forever.
Well, it can float there for as long as, not a long time, but we can, we might wanna put it towards something else.
Heck, I wouldn't mind paying the whole thing off out of reserve.
Me, too.
Could do that, depends on where that takes us.
That's my thought.
Okay.
It's a board's decision, so you guys think on it, and we'll decide next Tuesday.
Kathy, how much you got in there for solar?
Go ahead, Kathy.
So, I have nothing in my budget for solar, I guess I would, when we get to the point about discussions about solar, I guess I would like to, I would recommend that we strongly look at the purchase power agreement option, I think that's a much riskier solution for us, my department, countywide, you know, that way, we're turning those costs into an operational cost, we're just paying, we're setting, with a third-party vendor, they are able to take advantage of those tax credits that are offered by the federal, state governments for solar, when the county, if we were to buy those panels ourselves, we do not get that tax credit, if we used a third-party vendor, they could take advantage of the tax credits, they would give us a rate for at least seven years, we would just turn that into, you know, a monthly bill that we pay for electricity, and we would see a stable rate, I mean, I think we're, electricity rates aren't going up very much, although Eagle Point says they're going up about three percent a year, three to four percent a year, but this way, we would have a constant electric rate, and know what those costs are.
I think that we have a, I think we got a little bit more work to do on that process, like Kathy, the project, eventually, if we determine if we're gonna try it, and where we're gonna try it, then we gotta put out RFPs, bid it out, I don't think we're there yet, that's why I was surprised to see a dollar amount in our budget, so I honestly think that we, I don't know if it's another committee, or if you already have a committee that studied this, but still got a lot of questions, and a process we gotta go through before it comes back, to see about funding, and I don't think we're there yet, so, I'm not opposed to it, but we're a long ways from actually putting a dollar amount on it, so.
I guess, to that, I'd just like to see, like, just to help us move along with that, just if people can come up with a list of what all their questions are, that they wanna see answered about it.
Do you have a committee that you guys take that up with?
Yes, we've been working on the alternate, alternate energy committee, and.
Yeah, this has been probably over, a little over a year now, we've been talking of solar at this committee, being, solar being the primary focus of our discussions, we've also invited, you and I had partaken in those discussions, and what came of them was the study that was performed on all of our facilities, and then, like I had mentioned the last time we talked about solar, this is just a budgetary number, ultimately, an RFP, just like any other project. We develop an RFP and send that out for competitive bidding, so this budgetary number was just to give the board, if we were to purchase these solar panels, to give the board an idea of what that cost would be, and then where these solar panels would be.
So, I think what we'd like to see from the committee is a recommendation on first, where we may put these to try it, or, and then the process you wanna go through, I don't think it's feasible for the jail or this building right now, so I think if you could put those together, and once you get the recommendation, then it'd be the time, then, to put out RFPs for it, to see what we got.
That, the recommendation was presented to the board the last.
Yeah, but for what buildings?
Well, we looked at all the buildings, but we didn't get an opportunity to really go to each building, because I, like, the committee does have some reservations on some of the buildings.
That's what I'm saying, and we wanna hear what buildings you would propose, that we would start out and try this.
Yeah, and that's kinda what we tried to do.
And the board can make that decision, and then we'll have to go through the process of, Kathy's got some questions on different options that we could go through, and we need that recommendation, and we'll put it out for a bid, and see what we get.
I have a question on the Gilbertville shop, is one of those that we talked about having solar installed on.
Yes.
The possibility, and what would be the cost, or do we have an approximate cost on that, just to give us, if we were to start with a building that was actually being constructed, and that made sense to, for us down the road, to do the Gilbertville shop?
So, I don't have a good number on that, our architect spoke with a third-party vendor who would install solar on a building, they threw in a number of twenty-five thousand dollars, if we are to construct the shop ourselves now, we can certainly reach out to a third-party vendor, and look at placing solar panels on the building, because this is a different shop, it's a larger shop than the existing shop, and the roof configuration, the gable is changing approximately ninety degrees the direction, it may have become less suitable for solar, I'm not entirely sure, that's just an observation on, by, so we will certainly keep that in mind, but we don't have a good figure on what it would cost to place solar, solar on that building, we would be looking at it more at the Longfellow.
That's what I would think, because, you know, I can't imagine your cost is that expensive on the old building, or the new one, which should be better, with, what, you got, one employee there?
Right, at Gilbertville, we have one current.
Yeah, and he's out of there probably fifty percent of the time, would be my guess, or more, so I don't know what the cost.
But it could be that a small system could reduce a hundred percent.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I'd have to know what it's costing you now, and I would assume the new building is gonna be a little bit more cost-effective, but I agree with you, if we're gonna do it, I think the Donald Street Garage out there, that area there, where you got your employees working year-round, would be the good place to try it.
Right, I'd like to take a good look at all of our, at the new location, and a definite, in favor of it at Longfellow.
So, would it make sense to try to budget for that this year, or do we, it would be all right, Susan, when we talk about the capital fund, using something, I mean, just having that available, so we make the decision before July, to go forward with it?
Well, with the engineer, it's a little different, unless we decide, you know, to put solar as sort of a separate and cover, you know, countywide thing, and cover the, put it on the secondary road buildings, because typically, all of their capital and construction comes out of secondary road fund, so, and Kathy's list of capital was up there, we can get back to it, but if we wanted to increase that, one of the things we need to monitor in that budget is to make sure that we have a fund balance that is sufficient for secondary roads, so it's just part of our planning, but if we wanted to do her buildings, and put it in secondary road fund, to pay it out of there, we'll have to take a look at that.
But what I said earlier about the purchase power agreement, we would not be using capital funds at all, we would just pay one or two cents more per kilowatt for the, for the use of these panels, to receive the solar energy, that's how the third-party vendor's going to be keeping their costs, so our operational costs will increase by some amount, but we're not going to budget anymore for capital.
It would be done that way.
Okay.
That answers your question, we're not gonna put anything in.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Why don't we get that information and...
There's probably another work session.
Well, I would think, I think easily another, maybe two, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I think that's just what we need at all the part.
That is a, if you go to the server under budgets, it is, all that information is under the FY '20.
Okay.
So you can go to that anytime and look through it. And if you do have any questions, let me know. I think I've got all the information on there, but if there's something that there, that you do have a question, let me know.
This is, people are looking at, just to remind, the difference between options we're looking at, there's the, the power purchase agreement, which would require either, you could infuse it with a $250,000 or so down payment and lower the rates a little bit. You could have it with nothing and then the rates are, are what they're presented as. Or you have the option of flat-out buying the panels, which gives the greatest potential over the lifetime of saving, of saving money. But, so those are basically the three things that we're looking at. And there was, all the, all the buildings that made sense on it were everything that we looked at, except for the courthouse and, and the jail. Everything, everything else was able to get to 99%, 100% coverage.
That 450 for the garage, if you do that yourself, that number's too high then?
No, that, our architect gave us a cost of approximately $685,000 for us to bid the entire project as one, and that's where we...
So that includes you guys doing it?
Right.
Okay.
And we, we did go and get some estimates on garage doors. We received estimates from Overhead Door Company and Christie Door Company. And for all 10 doors, we got a figure of $38,000 to $40,000 total. So approximately $10,000, excuse me, approximately $4,000 per door.
That's out at the Donald Street?
Yes, where we need to replace approximately 10 doors.
That's not really that bad.
No.
So we could amend our budget to replace all 10 doors next year, if that's...
I have no problem with that. What color are they?
Assume they're blondes.
Some are blondes, some are brown.
They're white.
We've got them all the same color, too. We do have a different colored car out in the, in my, too.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, any other questions for me and our capital writers?
No, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Susan, anything else you need from the board?
Yes, so, and Kathy, well, I don't know you right now, but the bridge, the Cedar Wopsy Bridge, we need to make a decision how we want to, to fund that. And so, it's been a while ago, we brought, we looked at bonding for that and at the time, I think the board felt like, you know, we had enough reserves, maybe we should look at using reserves. My thought is that we additionally, you know, taxed for approximately $2 million for Country View this year. We won't need those funds. We could use those funds and replace a bonding for the bridge if the board wants to do that. We could still bond, as I mentioned, I'm gonna bring up another, we have, this is the spreadsheet that I sent out showing our debt service expenditures, the history of those roads and bridges and CIP. And, let me pull up some graphs. So here is where we've been, going up, but we're on a decline right now from 20 to 21. We're gonna have a, a kind of a sharp drop there, then we level off a little bit and then after 23, another sharp drop. So we're on a steady decline. This is not including the use of any reserves. We did plan to use reserves in FY '19, the current year. We kinda did that because of, of Country View. So in this fiscal year, total debt service expenditures for those two are like 4.9 million and we're using a half a million in reserves. In FY '20, our debt service expenditures are 4.7. If we wanted to use some additional, if we bonded for the bridge and wanted to use reserves for that and even additional reserves, we had $2 million, as I mentioned, in the roads and service debt service fund. So over, right now, currently, all of our debt is scheduled to be paid off by 2026. So we'll need to, if we don't do any new bonding, plan for how we're going to use that fund balance of $2 million in the next six years.
Don't we have possible bonding for the, what is that, Grundy?
Yes, and so that's what I put up here on the schedule. I took off the bonding for Cedar Wopsy, but I left the bonding for Grundy for $4 million at, in FY '21. But because that's a year that, not in roads and bridges so much, but in the CIP, our debt service drops, you can see, even with the new debt, we're gonna go from 4.7 in '20 to just a little over $4 million. So this is down here, the reduction in the roads and bridges debt service and the CIP for each of these years as we go down, which will free up funds, you know, for other purposes. So I have a $4 million eight-year bond estimate here, which goes through 2028 for Grundy Road. And then I just put in some in these two years, '22 and '23, some use of debts, of the fund balance in the roads and bridges debt service. I also have some in here for '20 and, and I guess that's, this is one area where, you know, if we're trying to lower that rate, that we could, you know, use some of that fund balance this year to, to do that also. Anyway, just wanted to point out that we are on a steady decline. You know, we have options there that you can...
Kathy, I asked for, last time, for some scenarios from you, maybe cutting back on capital and putting that towards that. Have you thought anymore about that?
So, yes, Ryan and I have talked about that and we, we do have, of course, a great need to keep replacing some large bridges every year. We, for example, we have several structures on Benning, one on Bennington Road, for example, that's probably close to a million dollars. They're, they're on gravel roads, but they are obviously used by agricultural traffic. So it's just a matter of if we use all the money this year or the next couple of years and don't, aren't able to go ahead with our bridge program, it will be trying to play catch-up for, for future years. We, we always have a need. We have 235 bridges. If they last 70, 50 to 60 to 70 years, then, you know, we need to replace two or three to four bridges a year. And that really doesn't include these big bridges, the very expensive bridges that... So I don't have a good scenario, other than we would have to just defer some large bridge project, projects.
In other words, no?
No, that's right.
I, I just looking at your capital and I was talking to Susan this morning, the last four years, I think it's been over a million dollars each year. If that was cut back a little bit, you'd have more money for some of these projects, or at least towards it. Just a thought.
And Kathy, I know you're talking in construction, but I think Tom was talking about your capital equipment.
Yeah.
And this is the history that we've had. And I think some of these years where we did only have about a half a million. In the last several years, we've increased that. But we bonded or we took out a capital loan note, what year was that, Kathy? 11 or 12? Yeah, FY '12. And, and then that was part of the reason why then some of these, plus the increase in the motor graders and we've had some high-dollar things, so...
Yeah, that's right. We had three months.
Yes, I, I guess I maybe misunderstood that. So then, as far as could we, could we be reducing our capital to make up for this, the difference in, in not bonding, not bonding for the bridge? So the motor grader costs have increased about $100,000 in the last 10 years, unfortunately. That's just the cost of buying motor graders. Trucks have also increased probably $50,000 due to the new emissions equipment on our dump trucks. We are spending more money on parts and equipment repairs on these newer pieces of equipment, even, we are now able to buy motor graders with an eight-year warranty, but the trucks, unfortunately, only come with a one-year warranty. So we are continuing to see high costs in our parts and equipment, annual expenditures. And I don't see a decrease in that.
But you did pick up about roughly $800,000, $900,000 a few years ago on the gas tax?
Yes.
That we, that we couldn't count on before that?
Absolutely, and...
Do you wanna comment on how you're spending that or what you're doing with that currently? I'm sure you have.
I would say that we're able to pave more miles of road than we, than we were before the 2015 gas tax increase.
That's what we were hoping, yeah.
Yeah, that our...
Bonding for that bridge, does payment come out of the road use on them? To make the payment on the bond?
On the bridge? No, we would, we would bond for the, I mean, we would, that would be included in our debt service. So we would tax for that.
So it would be taxed?
Right, and then, I'm, I'm, sorry, I lost my train of thought. But no, it would be in the debt service.
Yeah.
In the first year, you know, if we did decide to do that, we would, we would need to use our reserves for FY '20, only because we didn't have the resolution, if we issued the bonds yet this fiscal year.
Did we need those monies in fiscal year '20 for the bridge?
We will need to make a decision, yes. We do need the money in fiscal year '20, yeah. By the end of the year? Yeah. That, the, the contracts are signed now and we should be able to get with PCI and holding a pre-construction conference any day now. So they should be starting any day now. So I guess, I think our options right now, we can bond, we can use reserves for the $2 million, unless you want Kathy to adjust her budget in some manner to use more of their funds from secondary roads.
I guess I'd like to see us take a look at the reserves again. I don't know, I mean, I don't, certainly want us to dip down too low. Obviously, you can tell us that, I guess, on Tuesday where we're at with that, but I think that's the opportunity to do it.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, Kathy, you said things cost more money now, but borrowing money costs more money, too, now than it did on some of these previous projects that we did, unfortunately. I know it'll look for it to go down.
It's a nice tool to have if we need it, but if we don't, yeah.
Thank you, Kathy.
Really up to you and Chris, anyway. 'Cause spend an extra million dollars on this project just for convenience.
Well, the whole thing is millions of dollars less than we thought when we had those conversations.
You have it headed, and it could be another million dollars less than what that is.
If I could just address that.
I doubt that.
Yeah. The, the bid for the bridge was, was $4 million.
I understand that.
When we had projected, it was gonna be closer to $7.
I understand that. But if you didn't have the, you still would've went to the other way, it would've been a million dollars less or $800,000, whatever that was.
It could've been, but there's...
So it could've been $3 million.
There's very few bridge items that are just associated with...
I understand.
Well, either way, we're not gonna have someone killed in an accident with the combine and so that won't be on anybody's conscience.
That's all right, yes, for safety and...
That's, that's it. You can't...
Nah, that's, that's nice. We've closed bridges before, Chris, to build them. This was more a convenience for the people in that area. $800,000 convenience.
Well, that's your opinion of it.
Oh, I know, that's what I said, it's really up to you guys on what you wanna do, 'cause it was three people that voted for that.
Yeah, I know, I just meant, though, it wasn't just for convenience.
Yeah, it was.
In your opinion, no?
Well, I'm just saying, so you make the decision...
So don't say it was, yeah.
In favor of it.
I know.
Looks more like a say, too.
So you need anything more from us? Or we warned everybody out, yeah?
You never did get a cost on that, did you? Were you looking for a decision today on that? On the bridge?
No, I'll, I'll come back with some, some informa, yeah, some scenarios, looking at reserves.
Yeah.
So we'll have this on Tuesdays and, 'cause there's gonna have, are we done with the departments on all the increase?
I hope so, unless...
Did we approve the new personnel in each request on all of them?
Well, we talked about that on Tuesday and it seemed to be the consensus to leave those in there.
So we went through all of them that had the request?
Right. So unless you guys have additional questions or...
Well, Tuesday could be the time to do it.
And you'll give us time, if you can. Like I said, give us time to review those before Tuesday.
You want things wrapped up Tuesday, so you can...
If we're gonna have the hearing on the 5th, I think that was my goal, yeah, I've gotta send it off to be published on next Friday. And it takes, does take time to put it all together in the format that's necessary.
I should see no, no reason why we can't finish up Tuesday. I mean, really, you just have to, we just have to make some decisions and, and move on and...
Yeah.
Live with it.
Food for thought in your email to us of what we need decisions on. A reminder.
I'm done with emails.
I bet you are. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else, board, that you wanna ask or need any information for Tuesday? Nope. Anybody? Susan, anything else?
No.
I'll see you adjourned.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, we are adjourned.